All right, we are live.
Okay, thank you, Mo Man. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Budget Meeting. Today is Wednesday, December 9, 2020. Ben, Mr. Ben Allen is the Chair. I'm the President, Wondra D. Williams, and all of City Council members. I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:50 PM. Ms. Houston, please do the roll call.
Sir Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
President Williams.
Here, thank you very much, Ms. Houston. Before we begin tonight, I just want to make a statement. There was some concern last evening from several comments made about the public comment during the public comment period, and it related to the city of Harrisburg not assisting the residents during the COVID period. Well, today, the city of Harrisburg reallocated $500,000 out of their emergency solutions grant funds, and they are going to distribute that to the residents of Harrisburg who are facing difficulties paying their rent, their mortgage, or the utilities. And I'm encouraging everyone to please apply. The monies will be disseminated in two rounds. The first round beginning today, which is December 9, and extending until December 22. Residents can apply on the city website. You click on the link, COVID-19 Rental Assistance Program, and it will direct you how to complete the application. Each house sale will be eligible to up to $5,000 per house. The city of Harrisburg will also be allocating $300,000 for residents who are in need of food. You can contact Crystal at 717-255-6404, or Caitlin at 717-255-6418, who will be able to refer you to the agencies that are subrecipients for the city of Harrisburg that distributes food throughout the Harrisburg area. The city of Harrisburg has also given the Help Office in Harrisburg an additional funding of $100,000 to assist Harrisburg residents. We want to get the money out in the street, so residents, please apply. If you would like to pick up an application, you may do so in the lobby of the City Hall office, and thank you. Now moving on to Mr. Allen, who is the Chair of Budget and Finance, I now turn it over to you.
Why, do you want to mention the executive session?
Oh, okay, we had an executive session today regarding personnel issues at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to night two of our budget hearing regarding the proposed 2021 budget. Just as a way of agenda, I just want to talk through that quickly first and then move through the agenda. In terms of just kind of where we left things last night, we will kind of revisit some of the topics. I know through various concerns raised, questions raised, and things we've started form a framework are some things we'd like to see addressed by way of the budget, whether it be via a amendment to the actual budget itself or through some agreement with the mayor by written agreement on how to handle some of the allocations that we are proposing as part of the budget. So we will get to that early in the evening, and then we will move through department by department. What I'm going to do tonight, just as a means to move through the agenda, is I recognize that there may not be questions for every single department, but I am going to introduce each department head. I probably will defer to the committee chair, who is typically responsible for oversight of that specific area, to direct questioning and answering, and then we will open it up to further questions from council by way of hand. If you don't have a question for a department head, you don't have to ask a question of the department head, and we will keep things moving through in as expedient as a process as we can. And then we will conclude the evening, of course, with public comment as we did last night. Before we conclude the meeting, we will come to some semblance of whether or not we are turning the budget over to the agenda for tomorrow's legislative session, and we will make that collective agreement amongst us here on council to do that. So just by way of agenda first, as I typically do, I invite some of our fellow elected officials who don't often get to join us on regular meetings to ask any questions or offer any insight or things that you from a budgetary perspective. Charlie DeRunner graciously said, "Thank you," but he had another meeting tonight and could not attend. But Dan Miller, our City Treasurer, is here, so I wanted to give him a few minutes to address council with regarding the budget and his perspective, anything he might need or want from us as well. So without further ado, I will turn it over to our City Treasurer, Dan Miller. And Dan, you just have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Dan. And thank council, it's so nice to be able to address everyone. We don't get this often, this opportunity as much now with COVID. And what I wanted to talk to you tonight about was the list of projects that Treasury would like to accomplish, to really bring Treasury into the 21st century. And I'm sure many of you are aware of them. You know, for the customers, we'd like to have email billing. We'd like to have online payments. We want to have online customer accounts so that people can pay their bills, retrieve invoices, look at historical data. For treasury management, we want efficient software functions, the ability to modify invoices, reporting our system, to write our own reports without having to work with IT, so that we have the ability to do it ourselves. And the main, one of the really important things is we want a secure and reliable system. And in order to accomplish this, we need new software and hardware so that we can finally escape our 1970s vintage mainframe. And as many of you may recall, last year Treasury did include $150,000 in our budget for hardware and software. We're ready to move and make these changes happen. Unfortunately, that money was omitted from the budget that was presented to council and did not get approved. The same thing has happened here again. This year, we put in $150,000 so that we can enact these important changes for Treasury and for the residents of Harrisburg. Unfortunately, I don't think that $150,000 was omitted from your budget, so we ask you to, you know, restore those funds so that Treasury can make these changes, so we can progress, we can get into the 21st century. The other main project, we have many projects in Treasury, but the other main one we'd like to, I'd like to mention again, is our annual trash billing. I met with President Williams and the mayor in either January or February of this year to discuss getting this passed. We had a good discussion. Unfortunately, COVID hit right after that, which, you know, changed so many things. So it hasn't, hasn't happened this year. But in regards, we still believe that annual billing is really beneficial for every city resident and for the citizens of Harrisburg. It's really in our best interest to do that. And I just want to mention a few important facts. Right now, I just checked tonight, and our delinquent balance is in excess of $13 million. This is a $1 million increase from where it was last year, so it continues to go up. And I think we can, you know, we really don't have a good enforcement mechanism, and that's why we're asking for the annual billing. In addition to that, I believe we've heard the issues that many people had with us. And so we have adopted in our proposal a program for qualified elderly, low-income property owners so that they can, if they qualify, either mitigate or eliminate their trash fees. We don't currently have that, so they're not getting that benefit. So we're really not helping our elderly, low-income people. This is what I really talked with the mayor and Wanda about last year in January. When we did the analysis, we discovered that 70%, 70% of our delinquent accounts were due to landlords, businesses, or non-resident property owners. So it wasn't your neighbors that really are the result of this. It's residents, or not residents, it's landlords, businesses, and non-resident property owners. We have no positive way of enforcing our trash collections. That's what we're asking for. Those are the people we'd like to collect that money from. And one final note is that in, beginning in January 2021, we in Treasury expect to begin collecting trash receipts for both Penbrook and Progress municipalities. Both Penbrook and Progress municipalities use annual billing. So we will be providing that service for municipalities, but we're not providing it to our own residents. It's more convenient for them, and it increases collections for the municipalities and administration. So I don't want to belabor the point. Hopefully, we'll be working with all of you in January so we can get this passed early so we can prepare our residents and begin doing the annual billing in 2022. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Just while you were here, just by show of hands, does anyone have a specific question they want to propose over to Dan? With questions, oh, I saw, okay, Madsen and Major. So let's go with Councilmember Madsen first, and then we'll go over to Majors, and then if anyone else does.
Yeah, my question is, when it comes to the delinquent payments, you know, when I worked for the Department of Revenue, we had the amnesty program. Is there any way to create a similar type of program? I know a large amount of delinquent payments are landlords, non-resident property owners, et cetera. But I'm sure if you are a resident in a tough fiscal bind, would it be possible to implement? What would it look like to implement something like that? Is that something Treasury would be open to? So we have a window to get those folks who are delinquent, a good faith effort to come in, work out a budget plan that works for them, and then sort of move forward after that.
Dave, that's an excellent point, and actually, that's exactly what I would like to see happen once we have the annual billing passed. If we get that passed, then we'll have our mechanism to collect. And then with that $13 million, yeah, I mean, it's going to be hard to collect that realistically. So I was thinking that council could adopt some type of amnesty program. I haven't discussed any figure, you know, any specifics, but, you know, people could pay some lesser amount and absolve their debt and move on. So I think that's a great idea. We'd be all in favor of that, and that would collect, you know, a portion of that money. The annual billing is really to collect future revenue so that it doesn't continue to increase. The delinquent amount.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Councilman Majors.
Yeah, and again, and thanks, Treasurer Miller, for joining us. I'm glad to hear that the conversation is going to be focused more on that 70%. I think that was part of my concern in the past, is we weren't going to have a real mechanism. We were first discussing this to go after some of those commercial properties due to the way that things were set up. So we're going to explore a way to go after them. And I guess we'd also have to work with the administration to determine what would be a fair amount for us to be able to collect on the arrears, right? These arrears, it's grown slightly, but we, these are arrears that have been here for a while. So we'd have to all determine together what an amnesty program or an acceptable level of return is on these delinquent accounts. And I don't know if, from some of your experience, you have a number that you think would be comfortable, right? Because it's $13 million on the books, but we know if we attempt to collect it all, we're not going to receive all $13 million. So I don't know if you have any idea on what you think an acceptable level is in terms of, in the collection world, as to what we could anticipate being able to collect them. Then we would also be writing off a certain portion of that debt as well.
You know, I'm glad you brought that up because the mayor and I did discuss that, if you recall, in the beginning. Yes, they, the mayor did want to phase this in, so it was residents first and then businesses. But just in my last conversation with him, he said, "Yeah, he's all for it if we can do everybody all at the same time." So he has no problem going after the businesses, so I think that's, that may alleviate that concern for you. You know, I hate to say a number publicly before we really discuss it. But I mean, you know, if we can collect a percentage of those, that $13 million, I think everybody would be happy because they're just hanging out there right now.
Yeah, okay, no, no, that's fair. Again, I think that's, that's always been my concern, right? It's the overwhelming majority are, you know, the commercial properties, the businesses, and landlords that, and property owners that don't reside in the city. And we don't want to negatively impact the residents when we're attempting to, you know, collect the arrears outside of the residents that are, you know, that are in arrears and we can work with. I'm also glad to hear that, you know, we want to modernize collections. I think that's one thing that I think could also assist in getting some folks to make payments. I know I'll, you know, I'll, you know, rattle myself out. Sometimes I am behind a payment, but once I get it and realize that I can make my payment online, because I don't, if I don't look at the mail, I don't always do that, then I can always play catch-up and ensure that I get there. But if I got an email reminding me, just like I get for all of my other utilities, that would be paid right away. So glad that we're going to be looking to explore that. And just remember, just again, for my edification, that money would be included in this budget or has it been removed?
It's been removed, so it would have to be put back into the Treasury budget.
Okay, yeah, and if you could, I'll have to take a look and, you know, if you could send this over, some of those speakers again, that'd be helpful because I think that is, you know, one of the things that we all realize is that there are a lot of IT needs in the city of Harrisburg to modernize. And to me, especially for the arm of the city that helps us with collecting revenue, you know, if you're, if you have the tools that you need, it can make revenue collection much easier for, for you and make it a little bit more accommodating for the residents and the folks that need to pay bills to the city of Harrisburg. So, you know, I'll plug right now, pay local gov, that system works. But you have to, I have to get the email, make sure, I have to get the mail, make sure I put my account number in. If it was all just seamlessly in an email, it would make, you know, it would make those payments much easier. And it looks like President Williams, I think you may have a question, I thought I saw your hand. So that's all for me. Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you. Can I add one thing? We do have ACH payments, which automatic, once you sign up once, it automatically pays every month. I'm a very big fan of those. I know maybe not everyone likes them, but that's a great way to do it, too.
Thank you. Dan?
Yes.
So are you still considering putting names against people's property? Are we still considering, you still want to do that? Is that one method?
Well, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessary to do that because it would all be rolled into one bill on the real estate taxes. So anyone who was delinquent at the end of the year, then that alleviates the need for a lien, and it goes over to the county, and then the county would be the, a collecting processor for that, for those bills, just as we do it now with real estate taxes, just be exactly like that.
Can you give us a breakdown of how many residents are delinquent and how many businesses are delinquent?
I could, but I don't have that information. I can't give it to you tonight. But I can tell you that 70% of that total is, 70% of the total is the business, as I mentioned, business landlords or non-resident property owners.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Did anyone else have a question for Dan? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening, Dan. Thanks for joining us tonight. My question surrounds the technology upgrades that you mentioned. I'm wondering if there are any opportunities to collaborate with the IT departments and some of their technology needs are being met, upgrades? Or are, would everything just be separate?
Well, we would be working through with, you know, through the IT. Actually, we wrote the RFP for this and gave it to administration in June. And then I believe IT was reviewing that. Now, the RFP has still not gone out, but, you know, certainly, we, we work with, you know, with, with IT. I mean, what does happen is, you know, we're several generations behind. So, so the vendor that we select is going to put in new hardware, and they're going to really install the software and train us, and we'll go from there. But I know IT will still play an important role.
If I, this is Mark, if I can provide a little clarity. We worked with the Treasurer and the Deputy Treasurer recently on a request for a letter of interest that just, that just went out last, over, probably last, maybe 10 days ago for an ERP system. And so that letter went out. We've received a lot of interest from multiple companies. We anticipate that, right now, that at least seven companies will be bidding on providing services to us to migrate our system in total from our existing panimation to a new system. So we had discussions with the Treasurer. They were involved in that process and making, approved the letter, and it went out. We will, in the beginning of the year, set up interviews with the companies. And this would be a total, this is a total ERP system. So that would move us away from the mainframe, all the billing, all of that would be underneath this, this, this program. So, and as the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer were involved, they'll be involved in that, in that process as well. So it is ongoing. It's actually live. I have the names of the people that have expressed sentences right in front of me, and we look forward to a vibrant discussion with each and every one of the companies that did.
Okay, thank you for those updates. I don't have any other questions.
Anyone else from council have any questions right now for Dan?
I guess, yeah, just sorry, just one last. So Dan, just in terms of what the update we received from Mark, is that sufficient for what you're looking to do your upgrades for? So there's the RFI first, but again, I don't, with out there being, I don't know if it's for Dan or Mark, is the, are we budgeting for that upgrade in the calendar year 2021? Or are we just going to do the RFI and wait to see the level of interest before trying to move forward on any allocation of funds?
Well, the schedule has not been determined yet, and Steve can talk to that. But the, we'd like to phase it in, and we would begin with Treasury as we phase it in. But we have to, we have to talk to the respondents to make sure that they fit our calendar and our needs. But if Steve's on, he can, he can kind of augment that.
Well, I can answer what our thoughts are. I mean, we were ready to move a year ago. We think it's crucial that we keep forward on this. I mean, so far, really, very little has happened other than the fact that we wrote a RFP and gave it to administration in June. We'd like to keep at it. We think we're the ones that should head, head this up and make the decision. And we know that if we had the budgeted money, we would, we would achieve this. You know, it's been a year, very little has happened. I don't, I expect next year, I'm not sure what will happen if we aren't the ones that are driving this.
So for us, there is no more important IT initiative than to migrate away from this mainframe. We have, we have put the, the letter out there. We are clearly in the early stages of this, but with regard to where we want to be, this is one of the major initiatives for next year. And so there are a lot of historical, you know, things that we could talk about. But right now, we want to focus on moving forward. We agreed when we met just a few weeks ago with the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer that their needs would be first on the list when we initiate this and that they would be actively involved in the selection process. So for me, this is not about turf. This is about doing what's right for the city. And we have a number of departments that are dependent upon our ability to migrate away from the old system. And so in terms of best bang for our buck, it's to do this as a total solution for the city. We'll phase it in, and we'll take care of the City Treasurer and his needs first. But it'll be a total ERP, ERP system and migrate away from the mainframe.
Okay, thanks. No further questions for me.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Dan? All right, Dan, thank you for being here with us tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy holidays to everyone. Take care.
Me to you. All right, moving on. So I first wanted to begin with, and I'll turn, I'm sorry, Wanda?
I was just saying, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dan, that's all.
Okay, I wanted to kind of revisit. So in terms of highlighting some of the themes that I saw come out last night, I wanted to kind of put some things out into for public consumption for either further definition from the administration or questions, concerns that I knew that have been expressed from council to kind of lay the groundwork for a potential amendment that I think is already kind of under formation. So I wanted to kind of put that out there for public consumption, but also just so there's, you know, some discussion if needed on it. So I've jotted some notes. So for my colleagues, if I have mischaracterized it, correct me. Or if you have two cents to add, please do add it. But I will do my best to try to capture some of the things I've heard from people throughout the time that we've spent on these hearings so far. So one, I just want to focus in first, something that I know we can't necessarily effectuate by way of the budget, but I think it's very important for us to be able to identify and have a written articulation from the administration on addressing is how we are going to deal with reporting information from public safety back to City Council. We have legislated in the past and tried to set some guidelines in place. But I think it's really important, if we are setting some new roles, creating some new positions within public safety, that we want to clearly articulate the who is responsible for getting information and collecting it and sending it to council, and also the timeliness and the ability to have that information forthcoming on a regular basis, whether it is monthly, quarterly, things like that. I think that's something that has to be developed over time. But most importantly, I want to make sure that we are increasing the flow of information coming from public safety back to City Council. So that's something that I know, that I think it's important for the administration to be able to express back to council in terms of how we are going to do that, who might be the point person within public safety. And from my perspective, I'm not going to weigh in on the who as much as I'm going to weigh on the, the fact that as long as it happens, and we're getting that in a timely way, I think that's important. So that's something I wanted to kind of throw out there. Again, I realize that's not tied to an appropriation, per se, from a budgetary standpoint, but I think because of the conversation we're having around the budget, I think it's vitally important that we address that as we prepare to pass a potential budget. Secondly, we had a lot of discussion last night, and this has been something that we've commonly discussed in terms of budgeting each year. And this has to do with funds that we have allocated for filling in a role of the personnel or individual, but knowing that we've budgeted for the whole year for a position that we have not filled yet, I want to make sure that we can identify and articulate what we are going to do on a quarterly basis with unused personnel funds that have been allocated but not spent. In the past, we had allocated those funds to debt service. I am not married to that this time around because we have dedicated a significant amount of money by way of capital funds towards debt service. But if I'm listening, some of the needs that we've discussed on council, needs like light demolition, assisting small business owners in a COVID response-related avenue, these are some themes that I have heard discussed, and I want to throw out there. I would like to make sure that if we can have a commitment from the administration of what we are going to do to allocate these specific funds that are unused on a quarterly basis to things that we're really hitting the need in our community, whether it's right now or even thinking about things pre-COVID related. Should we put more into after-school programs as part of Parks and Rec in the summer? Should we do some of those things? These are some things I just want to make sure that we can identify, so want to put that out there into public consumption. Additionally, there was a question that I wanted to ask, you know, via this process. Are we contractually obligated through FOP to have a specific amount of, you know, uniformed office? Are we contractually obligated through FOP to have a specific amount of, you know, uniformed officers based on the contract as it pertains to the budget? Are we responsible for a certain amount that we have to have budgeted? Is there someone who could answer that particular question? Because I think that helps where we go next.
I, I'm with the mayor's hearing wants to weigh in.
I can say no, not, not in the sense that you're asking.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. The last two things that are kind of linked, there is a, a deal of concern that I'm sensing from council when it comes to the role of the CSR. There is some sense that we do not feel that they have been kind of adequately, fully developed enough for a degree of comfort for moving forward with all 12 roles. We would like to make it more of a pilot program that we reduce the amount that we actually budget for in year one to see if we can make sure that we have created enough of a, a necessary role to move forward with this type of program. And Aasha, I believe, will ultimately want to make an amendment to reduce the number of CSRs from 12 to seven, specifically representing each of the police districts that are in place. And so that's something that we would, would kind of want to put out. Now, if we wanted to look at it from a budget neutral person, we wanted to also look at the role of the co-responder and realize that that is something that we feel has been a little bit more developed. And we'd be willing to allocate more funds for additional co-responders if necessary. However, that will lead us to probably a point where I know we were going to discuss this, as I covered this last in terms of the discussion, is I want us to understand exactly what's happening, the relationship with the county on this. I understand that the county is willing to fund half of the position, but they have requested that they would like the, the positions to report through them. We would like some clarification. We'd like to understand what has been communicated between the county and the city in this. Do we need to go the path of the intergovernmental agreement? If so, we need to, we want to be able to understand that prior to looking at this from a budgetary allocation. So I knew I threw a lot out there. Colleagues, have I missed anything? Did I cover it? How about that? I took good notes. Mayor, I don't know if you want to weigh in on, particularly on the last part. I think that the, that's the one thing that has kind of popped up. The, the relationship with the co-responders with the county and, and, and what is, what is, what has been decided? Has anything been decided? We just want to understand that kind of going forward.
Yeah, I met with DA Charter and we sketched out a plan whereby the additional co-responders would be city employees. And the funding of those positions would be the city responsibility. I was informed tonight by President Williams that the county may be willing to pay for a portion of those salaries. But that's not a proposal that came to me from the DA or that I'm aware of presently. So obviously, if the county would like to offer us additional resources, we'll take them. But I think it was important that these be city employees and that they essentially answer to us here in Harrisburg. That said, we were going to have a joint review committee whereby the Harrisburg Police Department and the county would work together, obviously, to, to hire qualified people. Because the initial program was piloted by the county and has been very successful. So we want to, we want to work with them. But the funding was envisioned as coming from us, not the county. If that's clear. So any questions about that? If, if the county has a proposal that they'd like to give it to us, I say submit it to us in writing. And I, I haven't seen any, any, anything in writing that says that they want to pay for the co-responders.
I, I mean, a follow up question I had before, you know, opening up, maybe if anyone else has any insight on this is, do you, is there a specified amount of co-responders? Like, did we budget the amount that we did just based on what we assume the need will be? Or because the general consensus might be, our thought would be if there was an area that might have more need, it's that one. But I didn't, we didn't want to make that, you know, thought in a vacuum, right? We wanted to be able to know if there was what informed decision-making led to that number and, and what would, would lead to more. And then is it my understanding too, do I have this correct, that the training is going to be provided by the county based on their, their system in place, correct?
Yes, that's the, the crisis intervention training which the police talked about yesterday. It's not only training for the co-responders. They, hopefully they come with a background in that. But the, it's for the police as well. All of that training goes through the, through the county. So the number of three was chosen in consultation with, with the Harrisburg Police Department and the county as being what, what everyone seemed to feel was the right number. It gives us additional capacity. It allows for coverage when somebody maybe offer on vacation. And it allows us to have a constant continual presence of, of co-responders in the city. I, all I can tell you is that the police feel that three co-responders is the, is the right number. And that's what they've asked for. And they feel that more than that would not be necessary. So that's what they, that's what they presented. If we're taking the approach of let's phase this in as we are with the CSAs, then it seems to me going from one to three is a good starting point. We can see how that works and then we could, you know, sit down together after we've got those folks trained and hired and on the job. And if we need more at that time, then we'll hire more. You know, it's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward and simple.
Now, I, I, based on the information we've learned tonight, I mean, what, what is the logical next step to engage with the county to understand exactly how this might work? I understand that there is some, there's not necessarily agreement in place or at least everyone seems to be on the same page and how this would truly be offered. And the county has a desire that these positions should report up through them and they're willing to fund half of them.
We're, we're in complete agreement with the county. You know, I've met with Fran Charter. We've discussed the program. I've met with the, all the players. Again, if they would like to offer us money, we'll take it. So no one is saying no to an offer to help fund, fund this from the county, but that wasn't proposed. And they are not asking that they be county employees. In fact, they understand that we want them to be city employees. But absolutely, everyone works together, just like the, you know, the police department works together with the county. The co-responders work together with the county. There's, there's, there's obvious cooperation. So again, it's the first time I'm hearing tonight that the county may be willing to put some additional resources towards it. If they are willing to do that, we'll take it. But I don't think that changes the, the agreed upon desire to hire two more co-responders.
Okay, I, I'll stop there in terms of like, I don't, I mean, I, I might have more questions, but I when it, regarding this, council president, do you have any additional information, questions to that that we?
Well, it's like I told the mayor tonight, I received the call from Commissioner Hartwick. And what he indicated is that they were concerned about not having the city employee, I mean, the employees under the county. They wanted the two employees that we are going to hire to be under the county and report directly to them. They are paying half of their salary. And obviously, that's not the conversation you have with them.
Yeah, I, I haven't spoken to Commissioner Hartwick, but I did speak to DA Charter.
Clarification, I think we need to, but let me get some clarification if we have to meet tomorrow to find out exactly what we are going to do with the, these two positions. Because at this point, they're looking at, at pulling the other responder.
No, no, they're not. I mean, maybe the Commissioner Hartwick is doing some sort of political thing. But the DA is 100% crystal clear. No, I don't know. The DA is crystal clear that he understands that they're city employees.
He called me, as being the president, what he heard on, on the budget meeting last night, he was a little concerned. Now he called me and he wanted to ask me what was going on with the co-responders, two positions. He was under the impression that he spoke with Fran Charter and that the two co-responders would be under the county and they report directly to the county. And that the county was responsible for paying half of their salary. So if that's incorrect, then give me an opportunity to go back to Mr. Hartwick and find out what's going on.
That's incorrect as proposed. We're paying the salary. But, but they're obviously working with the county. So I, I don't see any tension or, or, or issues there.
I'll reach out to Mr. as well. We'll find out what's going on and then I'll report back to you.
I would argue that we want them to be city employees and not county employees. So if, if the question is, and, and that's something that I was very clear with, with my conversations with Charter, that we want them to answer to our community and the public. And that can be done by having them as city employees. We don't want to just host county employees. So I, I, I think I'm on the same page with all of you in council in, in that that's how we want this.
He was stating that the other co-responders in Susquehanna Township and in Pembroke, Swatara, Paxton are under the county.
Yes, yes. There, there would be no other municipality that pays for their own co-responders. That, that is not the way it's been done. But again, we took this proposal to the DA and said, this is a great program. It's working well in Harrisburg. We'd like to increase it. We're willing to pay for, for additional co-responders. And, you know, can we make this work? And they were very, they were very excited about it. But it was, it was clear these were going to be city employees. Now, the, the initial co-responder, Liz Manning, who you heard mentioned a couple of times last night, she will remain a county employee. So that was not the issue. It would be these two additional co-responders that we're funding in the budget.
So my only request is let's just make sure we close the loop if we can. I don't know.
I'll, I'll reach back out to Commissioner Hartwick.
Right, thank you. Councilman Majors?
Sorry, yeah, so a, a couple of questions. So for the county, the current co-responder we have, what department in the county do they fall under?
The DA.
Under the DA, okay. And my understanding is that, so if we're going to have one co-responder currently funded by the DA, what would be the issue with having the other co-responders? If, if this new proposal is, you know, worth its, worth the, you know, the conversation that started on the new proposal, what would be the issue with them not continuing to be under the DA? The, the city of Harrisburg is the seat of government for the county. So even if they are county employees, they would still be responsible, just like other county employees are responsible to the residents of the city of Harrisburg because we are also residents of Dolphin County. So I'm trying to understand if we're able to get a proposal where they're going to be able to provide us with 50%, what would be the issue with those matching funds coming together and us having them under the DA's office?
So I don't have an issue with accepting money for the co-responders. I'm just saying that hasn't been offered. I don't have this proposal. It didn't, it wasn't offered by the DA when we sat down and discussed it. The, the other part of the question was, would we like them to be city employees or county employees? Well, I'd like them to be city employees. If, if, if you feel strongly they should be county employees, we can have that conversation. The important thing is we want to, we want this co-responder program to work. I think if they are city employees, it gives us a little more accountability. I'm a little more comfortable with that. And I, I honestly thought that that's what council would want. But if, if, if you want them to be county employees and the county is willing to fund them, it's, it's probably not too late to have that conversation, but somebody's going to have to, you know, come to us with a, a concrete proposal here because all I'm hearing is some phone conversation that happened.
Right, right, agreed. So I'm just, I'm just interested to see what, you know, what we're able to get back from the county and maybe have some additional conversation. It, it's clear to me that, you know, you know, that this is something that we need to at least take under consideration if we're going to be able to, you know, potentially, you know, see some reduction in, in, in city, you know, payment out and still receive a, the benefit. It's at least worth the conversation and we could look to, you know, have some reallocation of, of resources. No further questions at this time.
Thank you. And I will, I will close out. Hopefully we'll have some more information when we can close the loop on this. So if everything's okay, we'll move on from this. Mayor, I wanted to turn it over to you in the first part. I know you said you had prepared a slide based on your questions regarding capital improvement projects and a timeline.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And that was in response to one of your questions from yesterday, which was, could we have a conversation about, you know, when we're spending the money so we can see what the, the cash flow looks like? And Moment, are you available to bring that, that slide up for us? Just one tonight. I promise we'll be quick. And then we'll get to the various departments, but this was for Chair Allett. So this was prepared by Wayne Martin. On the left is the list of the capital projects. They totaled more than in, in the budget because some of this is coming from grants and, and other sources. But the, the, the main thing to look at is the cash flow. When we expect to spend the money for the projects? And what the, what the chart is basically showing you is we don't anticipate making any expenditures on any capital projects until March. Which means that January and February, which could be the two roughest months potentially for, you know, for COVID is we're still in the winter and, you know, you know, maybe we have a vaccine, maybe we don't have a vaccine. We're still going to have two months in the new year to see where we are and to see where revenues are before we make any capital expenditures. Then they slowly begin in March and then they're pretty heavy in April, May, June and July and so on. And so what I can pledge to you is that we will, first of all, we can give council a sort of quarterly analysis of where we stand with the cash flow. Happy to do that. And we can also balance that analysis with a quarterly analysis of where the revenues are. So if we start to see, for instance, if we're in March and revenues are not where they are projected, which I understand is a fear, we can pull back on, it, it's not too late to pull back on, on one of these projects. And we can definitely take January and February to see where we are before we begin expending any money because that's the way the cash flow is looking like it's going to work.
Yeah, and, and Mayor, I, I think that's a good idea. In fact, I'm glad that you thought of it first. I think it'd be great to get, you know, i- if it makes sense, quarterly cash flow updates on where things are and projected in terms of where we are, that might be helpful. Because that is my ongoing concern is the degree of not knowing the things that we cannot predict at this moment and over extenuating ourselves to a point where we're, we're drawing down dangerously too much from the general fund. And now it'll recoup if we're, if we find ourselves in a, in a more precarious situation. So I, I would, I would welcome that update and I think, and thank you for the preparation of this slide to provide some analysis of when some of these things would occur. That's assuring to me to know in some respects that we are, we have some ability to manage that flow a little bit more closely.
Yeah, and we can really take a look at where we are in March. So I'm happy to pledge quarterly reporting on both that and the revenue front to council. And remember, we can pull back at, at any time. Just because we're allocating, it doesn't mean we have to spend the money. So we're in this together and we'll look at it very, very carefully. And I just have one more thing, if you don't mind. It's very brief. But I, I want a moment to take people to the Harrisburg PA website so that they could see how easy it is to find the police contract. Because for whatever reason, public comment every single week seems to be, where's the police contract? Why isn't it on the website? Well, it continues to be on the website. You go to harrisburgpa.gov/bureauofpolice and then you can scroll down. If you can scroll down that page just a little bit, Moment. You see, you can get the police district map up right there. You can click on and you can get the FOP collective bargaining agreement, the whole thing. Just click on view document. So that's been up on the website for, for weeks, ever since we promised we'd put it up. And for whatever reason, we keep getting public comment saying that we're hiding it and it's impossible to find. So I'm sorry that sometimes the website is difficult to navigate, but actually, when it comes to policing, it's pretty easy to find these things. You can also find the general orders, including the revised use of force general order. The eight can't wait initiative and other things are all on that page. So thanks very much, Chair Allett, and I will turn things back to you.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues right now on that slide with the capital projects for the mayor? Show of hands and, and help with that. All right, hearing none, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That we're going to move on to departmental conversations. And first up for conversation is the department administration. And as I mentioned, I'm going to defer to chairs of various committees to cover that. Under the department administration is housed the grants, human resources, IT, licensing and taxation, and business and resource development. But if, Mark, if you're kind of ready to kind of make yourself available first, does anyone have specific questions for Mark specifically? Anybody raising hands? Okay. Mark, I don't think you, I, I stay close. I don't think you're completely off the hook, but.
I thought I was.
Regarding grants department, are there specific questions for our grants department and our grants process? Anything that you want to ask at, at this point in time? Show of hands on anyone on council. All right, Dave, when you're showing your hand, you got to do it in front of the camera.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I guess my question, a lot of my questions would be similar for a lot of these departments or agents.
Uh, I guess my question, a lot of my questions would be similar for a lot of these departments or agencies, but I guess how are we feeling about the complement? Could we use more grant writers? Um, and then are there going to be any opportunities? I know when I engage, a lot of people that are interested in starting a nonprofit. Grant writing is a big part of that. Many of them don't necessarily know how to write grants. Can we get to a place where maybe we could offer trainings for constituents that are interested in starting nonprofits so they learn about grant writing? And then also opportunities for grants that are out there. And I don't know that's specific to the writer, if the mayor wants to chime in on that or Mark, um, but that was.
So it's an, it, it, uh, interesting, um, uh, question because I've had, number of conversations with Rebecca Volmer, who's our, uh, grants director. And, um, we have had discussions obviously with the mayor about expanding, or casting a wider net, um, to seek, uh, new grant opportunities. But that entails, uh, uh, a significant amount of work. And so we, we are in discussions about, you know, return on investment sort of things. And if we augment that, um, the, the grants bureau and add personnel to it, we want to make sure that we are going to be able to see a, a return on our investment in that. And so right now, um, we are looking at, um, you know, the federal database, grants.gov and seeing what types of grants are out there that we might be able to, um, uh, apply for. So we're going through that. Um, and once we have that analysis, um, and we determine that there's a, there's a, uh, a wealth of, um, uh, funds available, we might have to think about, um, uh, augmenting that in terms of personnel. But in the meantime, before we get there, um, we have to look and see, um, what we can do right now. And, uh, we are in, uh, discussions about where we want to, uh, to go with that. So, uh, we definitely want to pull in more money, uh, from our grant opportunities at the federal level. But we also want to be cognizant of the fact that we are dependent upon a lot of state, uh, opportunities as well. So we don't want to spread ourselves too thin. Uh, but we, you know, we're going to highlight some federal opportunities and go from there. And then we'll have to sit down with the mayor and, 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 you know, really, uh, impress upon him if there's a need to, to add more people to the department. And I think Rebecca always stands ready to help, um, you know, those in the community, uh, you know, develop, um, grant writing opportunities and helping them, you know, with their, with writing grants. But that put, that's a taxing, um, uh, that's a taxing effort. Um, and so I don't want her to be able to do that and, you know, spread herself too thin again. But I think she's always open to it. Uh, she kind of lives and breathes this, uh, um, it's her vocation. So, um, I think she's open to it, but I don't want to, uh, you know, tax her too much. But we're, it, it's a, you know, it's an interesting, um, uh, comment you have because it, it's, it's in real time. I'm having this discussion with her right now.
Okay. Yeah. Please keep me in the loop. Um, yeah. No, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, anyone else have a specific question regarding grants, um, right now? All right. Hearing none. Um, let's move on to human resources. I know I saw Joni on the line before. Does anyone have any specific human re- resource related questions for, uh, Joni at this point in time? Joni, I know I have just one for you, if you want to pop in.
Go ahead.
Very good. Joni, can I, is your voice on?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Um, so my specific question, uh, contains particularly to kind of training and development within the city. Are we adequately prepared from a budgetary standpoint to handle training opportunities within all city employees? When it comes to what's available, what we need to do?
As far as what type of training, you know, with the new EO diversity officer that came on, she and I, she's currently updating our policies for us. And she and I are working together as a team to do some mandatory management training on policies and procedures for the city, which we haven't done in quite some time because of staffing shortage. As far as like outside training, we do have outside training for our public works department for such thing as driving safety and things. But this year with COVID, a lot of things were canceled.
Right. Um, very good. I'm glad to hear that with the updates, particularly from the, um, the diversity standpoint as well. Any of my other colleagues by show of hands have any questions for Joni? All right. Councilmember Mattson.
Yeah, someone just, uh, grants writing folks, um, how do you feel about the compliment? You know, sufficient to execute the bulls that you have for the department? And then also, um, do we, uh, have a competitive salary range, do you feel like for the folks in the department?
Within, are you talking about within HR or grants?
Yeah, within HR, excuse me.
The salaries are sufficient at this time. There are some that are kind of low, uh, with us having two retirees unexpectedly this year. We've done a lot of moving and we're doing more cross-training. So right like now, like my, um, HR specialist is actually training our new benefits administrator and learning a lot in the process with that. So she'll be her backup. So, you know, we've been able to, um, get through this. It's been difficult this year. You know, it's been a lot of challenges because it was unexpected. We lost our payroll manager. So our HR generalist moved right into that spot. And then we eliminated the HR generalist and moved her. And then she was the next one we hired and she moved into the HR specialist. So we've done a lot of moving.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds like a pretty volatile situation. Um, well, I guess if, if, if anything changes and you feel like, uh, you know, uh, how, a higher sal- salary could help fill some of those positions, please let us know.
Yeah, we do have the, um, deputy director that's in the budget, which will help tremendously because that would eliminate some of the stuff that I've been doing that really could be upfront or they could be cross-trained to assist all, because I'm assisting everyone in the office with various things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions for Joni at this point in time? Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Daniels.
Seth, thank you for the demographic data. I was able to look at them yesterday. Um, do you have a sense of, um, you know, once COVID started, one of the things that happened was that, you know, different skill sets became more valuable organizationally than others and others received it in value, uh, for the city. So in asking about how salary determinations are made, we're talking about, you know, employees in the city where you had been evaluated when, and based on those evaluations, recommendations were made. You have a sense of, um, of what changes in skill sets will be like? What percentage of employees will be changing kind of the nature of the work that they're doing in the coming year?
It just depends on the, the position and department you're talking about. Because, um, right now we're, the people that are applying at the city, their experience is really significant and, um, because of a lot of places that are not hiring. But, uh, there are positions where we hire people and we're unable to keep them because salaries are higher at other places.
So, um, the evaluations that were completed this year, um, in terms of, uh, assessing raises, um, how, were those based on, and obviously we're not talking bargaining unit employees.
No, those are management.
Right. Um, the, were they evaluated on the same skill sets? Were they evaluated based on a pre-COVID skill set required, uh, expectations? Or were they evaluated on COVID, uh, you know, during COVID skill set, uh, work environment?
Well, um, no one's jobs really changed because of pre-COVID or after COVID. Uh, as far as, um, the job evaluation was based on what they were currently, they have done in the past year. So it was taking the overall, everything in the past year and, um, basing that up on there. If that answers your question, my staff, majority of my staff worked during COVID. It was not, uh, two of my positions really cannot work from home. So we were all in the office mainly the entire time. So, so our positions really didn't change much as far as what we did, except for, you know, when the hiring freeze. But once that was lifted, we were, um, inundated with hiring.
I think that's. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if, um, the, the actual evaluation we used was the same one as last year.
Does anyone know what the evaluation this year looked like compared to last year's?
I mean, it was the exact same thing. I can provide you a copy. We have a management one and we have a, a non-supervisory one.
Oh, I thought you just said that you didn't know what the, this year's evaluation.
No, that's.
It's the same. It was the same.
It's the exact same thing as last year. So I don't think there was, um, the evaluations that were completed with, there was anything different between pre-COVID and COVID.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question, uh, for Joni? Okay. Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. Um, good evening. I just have two questions relative to the performance evaluations. I used to know when, um, the evaluations were conducted.
August they started.
Okay.
Beginning of August and they were, and they had to the end of August to complete them. You know, there were some because of situations where they couldn't get it done. We got them like the beginning of September, but they mainly started at the beginning of August.
Okay. And so were performance evaluations completed for all employees in each department and or bureau?
For management employees, yes, except for probationary employees because they had not been here for a year.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question for Joni? All right, Joni, I just have one closing question, and this is more probably, uh, probably a process question too. I, I know we've had difficulties filling some positions, um, that we have open. Is there a process by which we are taking to evaluate, um, you know, why something might not be filled? Whether it be salary related, is it something available in the market? Is there any analysis that you're able to provide or feedback that you're give to the appropriate department heads all the way up through the mayor? Um, in terms of the challenges we might have filling open positions? Like I'm thinking, for instance, like anything from like our finance director to, I mean, we know this challenges with public safety. I think that goes without saying. But just in general, from a recruitment standpoint, are we, is, is there a two-way street in terms of information that we can provide to understand things that we might need to adjust? Whether it be salary, role, responsibility, and how they fit the market, um, in today's recruitment environment?
Um, Mark and I discuss these regularly as far as when there's a, a position that's been a challenge to fill. Finance director is one, and we know it's the salary. We just can't meet the salaries that, um, other municipalities offer. So, um, yeah, we do discuss, we try to find other ways to, um, encourage people to apply. We make changes in the job requirements. We have adjusted salaries. You know, we do the best we can.
Okay, thank you. Just kind of wanted to kind of put that out there. Um, Joni, thank you, um, for being here. And I will move on to questions for IT. I know that we have a few, I think, in mind. Um, Steve, are you on the, on the line?
Yes, I am here.
All right, perfect. Uh, thank you for being here. Um, I know there's a few questions I've heard kind of percolating for you, but kind of building off of, um, you know, some of the conversations that, um, we started the night with. A, a question that I have is, do we have a comprehensive enough plan in place to incorporate the various technology needs of department and in a centralized fashion enough to meet kind of the demand? I know we've talked a lot about moving away from, I hope, the mainframe environments that we've been living in, in a, in more cloud-based and ERP-related systems. But is there, do we have enough of a strategy and have we budgeted enough to be able to handle that, um, that transition? And, and do you feel that we're headed in the right direction, uh, with some of the things we're trying to accomplish to shift Harrisburg out of 1982? And perhaps maybe even to 2000?
Based on where we're at today, um, I feel much better about where we're going and how we're going to get there. I think the idea of an overarching ERP solution that will basically have a suite of modules that will be integrated with each other, that will be easy to understand from module to module, um, I think that is the key strategy for the city. Purchasing a system for treasury only is not a good idea because it has to talk to so many other systems. So that's why we need this overarching ERP system. Um, and I think, uh, the number of players in that space, uh, specifically for municipalities is going to be fairly limited. Um, I have a good idea of who a few of them may be, and I think they will bid. So I think we're in a good place where we're at. Uh, from a budget standpoint, in my budget, we have a half a million dollars in the capital, um, projects, budget for new systems, which would include the three systems on the mainframe as well as the finance system and the payroll system. So that would basically take care of everything that's still on the mainframe as well as the e-finance system, which is also very old, and the payroll system, which is on a platform that's not current with the vendor. So I think, um, we will be able to get there. We will be able to, um, email bills. We'll be able to notify you via email on things that you're behind on. So it will be much easier to stay on top of those delinquent accounts. From a cost standpoint today, we're spending about $350,000 a year on hardware and software maintenance costs just for the mainframe. And that does not include the $135,000 in consulting costs for Steve Zimmerman. So we are spending a lot of money, um, to maintain that platform. Uh, the biggest hurdle with getting to a new system is going to be the migration of all the historical data. That's always the hardest part about migrating to a new system. So we're going to have to do a lot of work to make sure we get everything we need in a, over to the new system when we're ready for that.
Fair enough. Good. Thanks. Uh, thanks, Steve. Um, any of my colleagues have questions for, uh, Steve? Okay. Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. Um, good evening. I have three quick questions for you. I just wanted to provide, if you could please provide an overview of all of the city's technology needs that are addressed in the budget.
Yes, we have, um, quite a few. Um, the one I just mentioned, the systems replacement. Another big one is LaserFISH, uh, being able to maintain it and to also put a public-facing portal out there that would allow us to store documents that, um, the residents could access, potentially fill out and submit to the city. Obviously, all the mainframe, uh, software and hardware. The new, uh, the new GIS administrator that we hired a little over a year ago. We've got, uh, money for software for expanding our GIS capabilities. So that's another big one. Um, our Microsoft 365 licenses that we pay for every year. Cybersecurity awareness, training and phishing exercises that we do, um, each month with city employees. Um, and then I guess the final two things to continue to expand our security camera installations, not only here at City Hall, but also to replace an aging or a pretty, uh, unreliable system at Reservoir Park that, um, has been in place for about three years now. So those are the main, um, areas that we're addressing with this year's budget.
Thank you. As I always ask, uh, can you please provide a tentative timeline of, I guess, complete migration from the mainframe?
Yes. So now that we've got the letter of interest out, uh, we'll be able to identify those vendors. And once we select that vendor, I think we could probably start that migration, um, in early to mid 2021. And it's going to take a while, so it's probably going to stretch into early to mid 2022 to get all that migrated. Because there is a lot of functionality that needs. Cause there is a lot of functionality that needs to be implemented, as well as all that data that needs to be, uh, migrated.
Okay. Somehow that doesn't seem that, that far away. Getting closer. My final question is in reference to the city's website. I know that we earlier this year, uh, accepted public feedback on, um, upgrades to the website. So I wanted to know, uh, if any progress has been made in that realm, or if we should expect to see these upgrades, at some point, maybe the first quarter of next year, or, or when we can see those changes?
Yes. So, um, that's the one project that has really slowed down. Our former deputy director was gonna lead that project, but he left at the end of February, so we were trying to keep it moving. Um, as part of the redesign, we're also gonna do a rebranding, um, effort, uh, for the entire, uh, website, as well as the city from a marketing standpoint. So I would anticipate a first quarter twenty twenty-one implementation of that. Uh, we've had multiple meetings to kind of review a marketing logo, new taglines for the city. So we're almost in a position to be able to present that to the mayor and Mark and others, so that we can kind of see, are we headed in the right direction with that? Um, and then to make sure we've got the content within the new structure of the website, uh, ready to go with the rollout in probably first quarter of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to buy show of hand, have a question for, uh, Steve? Yep, I thought you did. I knew you had one, so I was like, where did he go?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, Steve, uh, I heard about the, things are slowing down some. So is that extending out the timeframe for our, our migration? I know we had initially talked, we were doing some of the, uh, the planning, it was gonna take about three years. Is this extending out any of the, um, the timeframe for this, uh, IT migration?
Uh, fortunately, the website, um, slowdown doesn't really impact that because there's a different group of people that will be working on that. Um, I'll be heavily involved, as well as, um, our mainframe programmers who will have to export the data to get it into the new system. And we're gonna need a lot of, uh, input from the various department directors on how certain things work, how they want things to work, how should certain workflows go? So there'll be a lot of non-IT involvement in that, uh, project as well.
Okay, um, thanks. And yeah, I think, uh, Councilwoman Bowers asked you the question I had about, about the website. I guess, I, one other thing is, so are, are there departments that are looking towards, moving towards some potential like fillable forms that are gonna be available on the website? Uh, and if so, how quickly can we start to make some of those, uh, transitions?
Um, yeah, the good news is, um, with Laserfish, we can do that. Um, we have a gentleman on our staff who's become pretty efficient at that. Um, so we currently have about sixty-plus forms that are available either internally or externally. Um, last night Dave was talking about codes. We have two forms for codes already available on the website that we published in July, so there has been some utilization of that. Um, one of the ones we're getting ready to work on is a write-to-know request form, uh, for the law bureau, so that would be available. And we have one for DBHD, and we can continue to build on what we've done. The hardest part is building the workflow after a person fills out a form. Where does that form go? Who needs to do what with it? And kind of taking it from beginning to end, so that the entire process is completed in a pretty seamless, uh, fashion. The good news is when we build the forms, we can build them in such a way that you almost can't fill it out incorrectly. So there's a lot of edits in there, fields either you have to fill out or they're optional. So we make sure they're um, pretty bulletproof when we publish them, so that the data we're collecting is exactly what we need.
Uh, thanks. And then last question, in terms of any public safety groups, so any of the police forms, where are they in that process?
Um, as far as police forms, most of those are internal-facing. The system that they have, Power DMS, that has some training forums, uh, general orders. Um, those we're getting ready to put out there for the public to be able to access. So we kind of have been uh, discussing that with them. We just need to identify them and make sure they tell us where they want them and exactly which one. So there hasn't been a lot of work on the public safety side of forms publishing, but I think there will be more as we go into twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. I'm also thinking about the, uh, the citizen's complaint form that's in a, uh, it looks like it was a scan of a scan of a scan. When you look on the, the website, it, it's very difficult to, to read, so we can get that in a fillable form.
If somebody gets us, gets that to us, we can take care of that.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, and then I guess as the police are looking for some of the, uh, some information managers, are they integrated at all with anything going on in IT? So that we can, uh, improve, uh, access to police data, uh, that's for public facing.
Um, there are reports that are within some of these systems, but somebody has to get it out and make it available, so that it can be published. Um, if somebody can identify those specific reports, um, we can definitely make them available to the general public.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. So I thought I unmuted myself, and I didn't. Thank you, Steve, and thank you for being here tonight. I'm gonna move on to, uh, do we have any questions, says, questions for anything regarding licensing and taxation, um, at this point? All right, seeing none, um, how about anything for, um, business economic development, resource development, or anything along those lines? All right, I'll first start with Councilmember Majors, and then, um, in terms of directing questions, are we, I saw, let's see, I think I saw, I guess, Mark, or is anyone else that you wanna kind of defer to questions on that, Mark? Just trying to see the whole grid of who's here.
Yeah, my question was for licensing.
Okay, go ahead, Wes.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to know, uh, you know, so far in, in this year, what, what different, what licensing has looked like in terms of, are we seeing a reduction in any, uh, licensing based upon, uh, the, the COVID pandemic versus, uh, previous years?
Mike, or Mike Hughes, you on?
Uh, yes, good afternoon, or good evening, sorry. Uh, yeah, very, very good question, and, um, it's actually to the, to the contrary, uh, of what you would expect, uh, during the pandemic. Um, we're actually going to exceed last year's number, and in the month of July, we actually hit a all-time high, uh, issued eighty-one licenses, uh, for that month alone. Um, so we've been very active during the pandemic in this office, uh, and have been out on the street and, and using our other mechanisms of discovery work. Uh, and we're able to identify, you know, a lot of businesses that weren't licensed, and specifically this year, uh, a real uptick in the contractors, which I'm sure as you've noticed, uh, as a result of a lot of the large construction projects, you know, occurring at the moment in, in the city of Harrisburg, uh, from the courthouse to the archives, work at the farm show, you know, the, the new Autozone, the marijuana, uh, building up on South Seventeenth. Uh, just to name a few, all the roadwork that's going on. So, so we actually, uh, have benefited from all the construction projects, uh, happening as far as, uh, the uptick in licensing this year.
Okay, um, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thanks, Wes. Any other questions for Mike while we have him here? All right, hey, Mike, thanks so much. Um, yeah, moving on to any questions regarding, uh, business research development, economic development, um, right now, that anyone has in, in, in mind? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Mattson.
Yeah, uh, my question is, i- is Jamal on?
I think I did see yes.
Oh, yeah. Good evening.
Uh, you know, just given, um, the situation with COVID nineteen, I know you answered this questions, uh, you know, council had a few around, around, uh, supporting small businesses through the COVID crisis, but thought it'd be good for the public to hear your response to some of those questions, and then maybe, um, talk about some of the strategies, uh, for helping small businesses and what we can do to appropriate funds in this budget to help in those efforts.
Sure, sure. Well, uh, you know, obviously, you know, this year, you know, has been, uh, very difficult for, for small businesses. So, uh, you know, recognizing that, uh, you know, our bureau has, uh, really just tried to, you know, take that into consideration and, and, uh, you know, really respond, you know, with, uh, as many different kinds of support and assistance, you know, as, as we have been able to, uh. Uh, one of those ways has been through just some, uh, consistent, uh, outreach and education. So we, we did have, uh, you know, we were able to conduct four, uh, workshops, you know, throughout the year. Uh, the first of those was in March, uh, which, uh, actually was our, our last, uh, live in-person, um, kind of a type of event, uh, which was a first steps to, to starting your business workshop. Uh, but once the, uh, uh, pandemic hit, uh, we had to transition those to, uh, virtual sessions. So, uh, you know, throughout the remainder of the year, uh, we had, uh, three additional workshops, uh, one, uh, based around, uh, positioning your, your business for success in a crowded market. So it helped, you know, businesses learn how to, you know, market and, and brand themselves, uh, just to be able to, to, you know, stay competitive and, and, uh, you know, be, be relevant, you know, as far as, uh, you know, being a, being a successful business. Uh, we held a, a, uh, a third workshop, you know, which actually was, uh, more focused on, uh, you know, rebounding and, uh, uh, recovering from the effects of COVID nineteen. So, uh, we had some experts, uh, on that, that session that really just talked about, you know, day-to-day strategies. Uh, you know, we had a, uh, a business that was, uh, you know, actually in, uh, you know, in the industry of, uh, you know, cleaning and, and, uh, and professional safety. So we were able to, to give some really uh, important tips, you know, to, to, to businesses around, you know, how to maintain a safe environment, you know, in, in their own businesses. Uh, you know, had a gentleman there from the SBDC, so we were able to just to talk about, uh, you know, different opportunities for people to start businesses right now, and just to really just take a look at, uh, you know, needs that, you know, maybe needs that, that we didn't have, uh, you know, prior to COVID nineteen. But, you know, right now, there, there, uh, you know, there may be some bright sides, you know, to, to the pandemic, in that it may have created some, some new industries or, you know, created some new needs. So if you're a person who's able to, you know, to carve out a niche in that area, you know, there may be an opportunity to go into business for yourself. Uh, and then finally, uh, just, just this week, we, we did a, a session with, uh, with Google, with a representative from Google. Uh, Grow With Google, which taught businesses how to, to get themselves online, uh, which again, due to the pandemic, you know, we've seen an increase in online and, and, uh, you know, virtual services. So, uh, you know, that workshop, uh, you know, really gave everyone a step-by-step, uh, tutorial on how to, how to utilize the, the Google platform, you know, just to, to make themselves visible. In addition to that, you know, obviously, uh, in the spring, uh, we did, uh, a grant program for, for Harrisburg-based businesses, uh, which allowed us to, to put some cash into, into the hands of those, uh, those business operators for them to take care of, uh, uh, you know, bills with creditors, or, or really just, you know, the day-to-day maintenance of, uh, of their businesses. Uh, there is a, a round two of that, uh, grant program, which is, uh, applications, uh, are being taken right now. Uh, and then just in addition to that, you know, just, you know, letting the, the community know that, uh, you know, even though our, you know, for sometime our, our doors weren't necessarily open, uh, you know, but, you know, we could still be reached by, uh, by phone, by, by email. Uh, yeah, I've taken tons of calls, you know, throughout these months, just from businesses that were, uh, you know, in the very beginning of the pandemic, uh, looking for, uh, information on how they were categorized as businesses, whether they were allowed to still be open, uh, whether they even needed to, uh, to be closed or not. Uh, so just helping them work through, uh, those different phases of the shutdown. Uh, you know, to now, as, as some businesses are, uh, you know, really trying to get their, their feet back under them, just continuing to be able to, uh, you know, make referrals, you know, to, you know, to banks, to financial industry, uh, institutions, uh, you know, different departments within the city, and also to some of our, our different community partners that are providing help. Uh, you know, we've, uh, continued, continued to be a resource for, for businesses throughout.
Thank you for that. Um, I'm just looking over your comments that you submitted. Uh, so do you feel like you have the staff complement needed, um, to help, uh, uh, during twenty twenty-one or this upcoming year?
Yeah, well, we, you know, business development, economic development, you know, ju- generally kind of function as, as, as one department. Uh, but I, I would say, you know, my response to that question was yes, you know, we would, would need, uh, uh, you know, I think having at least one additional, uh, you know, person on, on staff would, uh, you know, allow both myself and, uh, uh, Nona Watson, our Director of Economic Development, allow us, you know, some of the time that it takes to, uh, uh, to do more planning, uh, to do more programming, uh, uh, you know, to, to attend, you know, some of the different meetings that, that need to be, be had. Uh, just with, with regard to, to making sure that, you know, we, we, we have the partners that are necessary, allow us to do more outreach and those kinds of, of things. So yes, if we were able to, to, uh, to add at, at least one person, probably, uh, an administrative type of person, just to assist with, uh, you know, some, some reporting, uh, you know, just some kind of, you know, day-to-day, uh, clerical activities, you know, that are, are important. Uh, you know, that would, would allow us, I think, to, uh, be a lot more efficient.
And have you made this request in the budget? Is it?
Yes, that, that request is part of our budget submission.
Okay. And then, um, that's it for me. I know that's been a hot topic a lot in the community, so I don't know if any of my other colleagues just had any questions. Sorry, Ben, I'm not trying to hog the meeting there, but I didn't know if anybody else had some small business questions, while, since it's, um, such a vital topic going in the community, moment.
Do you have a question? I mean, I, I guess it could be, uh, relative to small businesses. I was just interested in, good evening first. Um, if you could speak to some of the goals that you've set out for twenty twenty-one and how the budget that the post budget would assist in achieving those goals.
Sure. Uh, in terms of, of twenty twenty-one, uh, one of those goals is to continue, uh, our workshop series. So, uh, this year, we, as I mentioned, we were able to do, uh, quarterly workshops throughout the year. Uh, you're looking to continue that, and if possible, uh, maybe add, you know, some additional, uh, uh, sessions to that. Uh, you know, maybe some, some mini workshops, or just, you know, some more, more targeted workshops, maybe looking at some different industries. Also, one of our, our goals is to, uh, to do another, uh, local, uh, spending, uh, campaign. Uh, we, we operated one of those in, in August, uh, really just kind of focusing on, uh, you know, directing more spending and, and contracting to, to Harrisburg-based businesses. So, uh, we'd like to do that again in twenty twenty-one. Uh, this time, uh, again, highlighting some different industries, uh, and, and making, uh, that way, you know, we may be able to, to, to do more of those campaigns throughout, throughout the year. So, uh, again, either quarterly or, uh, you know, maybe bi- bi-monthly, but, uh, really just, you know, making sure that there's a consistent, uh, effort, uh, on our part, just to, to highlight businesses and just provide them uh, with some additional marketing and, and some different promotion, you know, of, of, of those, uh, those businesses. Uh, in addition, uh, we would like to, uh, uh, conduct a, uh, my, an MBE, uh, WBE certification program. Uh, in this, we would, uh, identify some local businesses through, uh, an application process, uh, and then based on those who are interested, uh, put together a, a cohort of, of, of small minority-owned businesses, uh, that would, uh, that would allow them to, uh, you know, do some peer-to-peer networking. Uh, also bring in, uh, you know, some speakers, you know, bring in some, you know, some currently, uh, certified businesses as, as mentors. Uh, but with the, uh, the end goal there, for, for, uh, the city to be able to fund the cost of having these businesses go through the, the MBE certification process. Uh, you know, that certification would then allow businesses to, to grow, to expand, uh, to put them in position to, uh, be able to, to, uh, qualify for, uh, contracts, you know, that are out there, uh, with, uh, you know, larger companies, or even with the, uh, with state, state and federal government. So, uh, those are, you know, probably three of the, the top goals that, that we're looking to, uh, to, uh, to roll out in, into twenty twenty-one. And, and yes, all of those were, were submitted as part of our, our budget proposal.
I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jamal? Or I know we also have Nona on the line. Does anyone have a question, either for Jamal or for Nona at this point?
I do.
I do.
Okay, let's go first to the president, and then we'll go over to Councilmember Green. Go ahead, one.
Okay, great, go ahead. Okay. Only, I only have one question, Jamal. And, uh, during this COVID period, how many businesses, uh, have, uh, defaulted since, uh, COVID? Okay, great. Good. Okay. Only only have one question, Jamal. And uh during this COVID period, how many businesses uh have uh defaulted since uh COVID? Or or closed their business? In the downtown area. Do you have any, you have any data for that?
I do, I do not have a a specific number. Uh, I could could uh re- could get that for you. Uh, you know, I know uh just kind of from a personal standpoint, you know, there are uh, you know, some businesses that I I have seen that have closed businesses that I I used to patronize myself. Uh, as far as the specific number, I don't have that, but I could, I could definitely get that for you.
The only reason I said, I know we're going to have another round of trying to, you know, provide some assistance to the business in the city of Harrisburg, but uh, do we need to do that if a lot of the businesses have already closed? I know for a fact there's about two or three uh that I know have closed. So I was just wondering if, and they they're not in the city of Harrisburg, on the outskirts, but um, in the city of Harrisburg, but I wanted to know directly uh within the city limits, how many businesses have closed because of the COVID?
Again, I I could, I could research that and get that information to you to the to the other part of your statement. Uh, you know, I I do think absolutely that, you know, the businesses that remain open are are still struggling uh and could definitely benefit from uh, you know, some additional uh capital to uh make, you know, to to allow themselves to continue to to operate. So uh, un- unfortunately, we're, you know, there may be some businesses that that don't rebound and that do need to close, but if we have an opportunity to to support those businesses that are going to remain open, uh, then I I hopefully will will be able to do that.
Well, I'm, I just like, you know, I'm concerned a little bit because the business we did help and we supported, I wonder if they're still, you know, uh, continuing on with their business. Were they able to regroup? And if not, you know, I'd just like to know what assistance we can provide, what additional assistance we can provide for them.
Madam President, could I, could I, uh, let me just say, the the new round of the Business Stabilization Grant Program is designed to be a reimbursement grant, which is a little different than what we did it before. So businesses will submit their receipts for January, February, and March, and then get to draw down on the grant as a reimbursement. So it 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 helps them stay open and keep their doors open, and it's not like a one time payment, and then, you know, maybe they they end up closing. It's really designed to help the businesses make it through the winter.
Okay, that's wonderful. Okay. Thank you, Jamal.
You're welcome.
Ms. Green.
Uh, the one question I had is um, for when small businesses or any businesses come into our city, do we have a system of outreach to them to let them know what resources and contact information and just things that we have within the city? Um, I guess in my mind, I'm kind of thinking like a welcome packet, like a welcome to the city type packet that would give them your contact information, resources, um, MBE WBE list, so that if they would, they would just have easy access to it rather than have to search for it.
Sure. We we do have uh something like that in in development. Uh, Councilwoman Green, uh, I know myself and uh and uh Ms. Watson have uh, you know, uh, you know, I've had that discussion around, you know, how to uh, I think proactively, you know, outreach to to those businesses. Uh, you know, right now probably happens more uh in that uh, you know, they they reach out uh to the city uh or uh in in many cases, if uh once we receive the the list of new uh new businesses uh that have applied for their uh business license. Uh, you know, there there's times where, you know, I'm able to 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 reach out to them, but, you know, as far as uh right now, as far as a welcome packet, you know, we we do not, you know, have one, but uh it has something that has been something that we we have discussed and uh uh, you know, would would uh would like to uh make sure that 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 happens uh uh in the coming year.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I would love to see that happen. Um, I think it would just be proactive, make things maybe a little easier for you initially, uh, rather than having to reach out to all of them. So I'm I'm glad to hear you're working on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions for either Jamal or for Nona? All right. Thank you, Jamal. Thanks for being here. Thank you also.
Thank you.
Say hello, but thank you both for being present. Um, moving on to Department of Public Works, um, I wanted to kind of open up. Who do we have from Public Works tonight looking through the grid? Anyone I see? Chris, anyone else?
Dave West.
Uh, Dave West, yeah, there he is.
All right, perfect. Sorry, I had to move to the next page to see you, Dave. Sorry about that.
I believe Nick's on as well.
Who, I'm sorry, who?
Nick Fisher. I believe he's on as well.
Okay, great. Um, so I don't have any specific questions for um Public Works, um, but I did want to defer to Chair Majors, Chair Majors, you available on uh regarding Public Works and questions you might have to go in. And I'm sure the youngest member of our council team has questions too, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, our our youngest member decided he wanted to uh come on camera uh this evening, so.
Always welcome.
Yeah, uh, just, just real quick, and I'm I'm uh, so I I I know we're looking to uh we have contracts that we're going to be looking to enter into intergovernmental agreements with uh Paxting and and um and Pembroke. Uh, you know, just want to make sure that uh, you know, with these additions, uh, we're not having any negative impact on um on on our budget. I I know, you know, these intergovernmental agreements are 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 great, and we're, you know, just want to make sure uh Dave uh and the folks on um in sanitation are comfortable with where um staffing levels are uh and uh equipment in order to be able to uh conduct uh, you know, your your job.
Yes, we have um, we have a uh, excuse me, one second. We have um, we actually uh purchased a another sanitation packer that's being built presently to help us with this intergovernmental agreement with um Pembroke and Paxting. We also are gonna uh in the process of hiring uh three motor equipment operators and three laborers to help us endure this endeavor that we about to accomplish. Um, actually, I have been um going through the route with the present company's operators for the past couple of weeks, and ironically had lunch with a couple of the operators today, and they want to come on board with us, which is a plus for the city of Harrisburg to where we do not have to train individuals if they would come on board with us. And uh, they already are doing the route currently, so we wouldn't have to do that training. We will hit the ground running. We will already be in the process. We're in the process of um delivering uh the containers shortly, which is, which is the toters. So we are way ahead of where we was in the short period of time that we have. So we're doing very well with the start of uh the Pembroke project to it. Then after we get into the Pembroke project, the um Paxting project is like half the size of the Pembroke project. So it's very easy because I've been also been uh driving that route to design the route so we can go into it because it's a separate day. The um, we 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 really defeated uh the the accomplishment of the Pembroke aspect because they wanted to stay on Wednesday, which we already do Stilton, and we already do our own city. So the that accomplishment is is very large for us.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, and then in terms of how are things going on the uh, the enforcement side uh with ensuring that uh our city residents are adhering to uh our our trash ordinance. Um, I know we have Howard uh Drayton, who's been working diligently uh to ensure people are adhering to the rules. Uh, just want to know if there's been uh any enforcement actions uh to this point for uh folks that may not be uh getting rid of their their trash properly.
Yes, they have. We um, we 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 also have Kevin Jackson, who is our other enforcement officer along with Howard Drady- Drayton. And um, yes, we are in enforcement. We are still out. Uh, we're, we are still picking up blight. We're still going through the rubbish, trying to find mail and information, and we're still trying to um take people to a court virtually. We're still pre- presenting fines. We're still on course with everything that we were doing because they're out there. Because of the pandemic, they didn't stop. They're still coming.
Right, absolutely. Um, yeah, so uh at this point, I'll I'll defer for a moment. I I may have some additional questions, but uh uh, I'll I'll turn over to other members of council.
Any other colleagues have specific questions for Public Works? Go ahead, Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. Um, good evening. I just have a follow up question regarding um uh Mr. Drayton and Mr. Jackson and their enforcement roles. Um, do you believe that there, is there a need for an additional enforcement officer, or do you think um, we're fine with the two gentlemen that are currently serving in those roles?
I think at the present time that we are fine because there is, because of the pandemic, there is only so much that we can do. So we have to follow a different approach because uh along with um with with going out to these blight uh uh situations, we have to go through virtual. So there's a lot of backup in court. So if we did add an a a a an additional enforcement officer, all all that will do is have us back up even more because we will be out there even more and 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 putting fines and and virtual courts even more, and it'll just back us up even more. And I believe until we get through this pandemic, I think we're fine where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council President.
Hi, Dave, how are you? Thank you for being here.
How you doing?
I'm good. Now, um, you just mentioned that there was a couple of individuals who worked for Pres- uh Pembroke Presley. So would they be doing the uh, would they be doing the driving or they're the laborers?
No, they they actually work for Republic, and they are, they are actually operators. They're motor equipment operator. They're, they drive the trash trucks. And also, in the same sense, my thought was, they can work for us through that, the Pembroke aspect, the Pax Paxting aspect. But these gentlemen also have Class A CDLs, and we can also use them during the wintertime through our snow event. We can use them all over the place because they have experience in in and operating equipment. It's in a, it's a plus for us because we don't have to go in and we don't have to train uh individuals to what what we want them to do. They're already there and they're already doing what we need done presently.
And they know the route?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so how many people are you speaking of?
Right now, it's 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 three operators. And basically, and basically, they they run, they run three trucks. So the three operators i- is is what we need because you can get a laborer to be on the back of a truck, to follow a truck to 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 do the trash. I'm not saying that the laborer i- is is i- it should be placed placed low, but what I'm saying is if you have those operators that know that route, that that's what we're looking for.
Okay, so we have the labors in place, January the first or January the second?
Yes, we will have them in place.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, mother. Any other questions for Public Works?
I don't have a question, but I'm more of a compliment. Uh, thank you all for all the work you do. Um, I love the way that you advertise for the positions, uh, the old school, old fashioned way, a sign outside of the building. Um, which I think is, it also speaks to, you know, the people who live in the area, that they feel like they have the same opportunity um to apply for those positions that they're they're being equitably um distributed. So I appreciate driving by and seeing those signs, um, because I think it's important to advertise, making sure we're advertising in our city. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys, for being here. Um go, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Wes.
Yeah, I just
Up, you froze.
You froze.
There you go, Wes. You have to ask it again because you froze for all of us.
The little man touched the the computer.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, I froze, I froze on my end as well. That's why I was just making sure. Okay, um, just a a couple of questions on uh regarding uh the host fee and the host fund. Uh, could, I don't know if it's, would be the mayor or um or Chris, if they could just go over the uh expenditures that are allocated in in the host fee for twenty twenty one.
Sure, I can do that. Um, the uh, just in general, um, we had requested nine thousand dollars for advertising and printing. Um, that's a increase of seven thousand dollars from last year because there's been a number of needs identified as far as trying to increase communication and advertising for uh number of programs with the city, such as the Senior Tree Program. Um, we have sixty thousand dollars allocated for the Senior Tree Program. Sixty thousand dollars allocated for illegal dumping cleanup, ten thousand dollars in the miscellaneous supplies um line, which is primarily designated for tree work. So um, the Senior Tree Program is more designated for pruning and removal of problem trees. And the ten thousand dollars in that line is more for um tree supplies and planting. Um, the grants to local units line, which shows a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. Um there's one hundred and twenty four thousand dollars allocated for the Environmental Teen Corps and ten thousand dollars allocated for an environmental justice symposium that DEP had requested the city um coist with them this coming year. Uh, thirty thousand dollars for the matching share grants. That's to the Capital Area Green Belt um for the work that they're doing around the Paxton Creek and removal of invasive species. And forty thousand dollars for community cleanup projects. So that's primarily projects similar uh to the um the Great Harrisburg Cleanup, the summer program that Wild Heart Ministries does, as well as um some ideas from uh some of the people in the EAC and some other community members about a program to try to work with uh local corner stores uh out in the community to try to clean up the area near their properties out in the street and sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. And I've been working with uh some members of the EAC on uh developing a uh an ordinance that we're going to look to uh introduce hopefully at the beginning of the year to deal with corner stores um and some of the the trash that accumulates there. Um additionally, okay, uh, we uh, we have um looks like there there may be some vehicle money being spent on a vehicle out of there. Is there any?
Oh, yeah. So that that is just, um, that is essentially just the carrier from this year. It's the um, the money for the electric vehicle charging stations. The purchase orders have um for the actual hardware has been put in and the requisition for the installation has been put in, but the actual checks and everything will probably not go out until January. So we wanted to make, I was talking with Hillary in purchasing, and she recommended putting that in as a placeholder so it would still show up in the budget in January. But it's um for work that has already been started this year.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, and I I think the other question I have, they may be falling under um Parks and Rec since deal with some of the work being done with the uh the city arbers. And just since I see uh Nick on here as well, Nick, is there anything else uh that you guys need from a fleet management perspective uh that's not included in the current budget?
Uh, included in the current budget, we are looking at an RFP for a better fleet software. Uh the RP is in the process of being written. So we anticipate that coming out first quarter of twenty twenty one. Uh, but that has been budgeted uh as far as anything unbudgeted. I'm not aware of any additional spend at this time.
Okay, uh, thank you. At this time, no further questions.
Thanks, Wes. I have uh one actually question too. Uh, Wanda, do you want to go first?
Well, um, Chris, uh, where is the, you said the hundred twenty five thousand was under the um grants to local units. That's for the removal of the trees for the senior?
Oh, the that, the the one tw- a hundred twenty four thousand, that that was for the Environmental Teen Corps. Um, the miscellaneous contracted services line um that sh- shows a total of one hundred and twenty thousand. Um, half of that was the Senior Tree Program and half of that was the Illegal Dumping Cleanup.
Okay, so where is the teen program? Where did you pick that?
That that's under the Grants to Local Units line, the four six two zero zero zero.
Yeah, okay, I see it. One thirty four is the amount, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. My last question, I'm not sure who may want to answer, but it's an overall um question dealing with the agreements that we are making with some of the municipalities. Who and and how are we making some type of pro forma um judgment in terms of um how we engage in the projects, whether it be steel and Paxting or whoever we're working with from a sanitation standpoint, to make sure that we're covering our costs and and if anything, making sure it kind of ties back to benefiting the residents. It's kind of a an add on to a question that I asked um initially, so I don't know if something the administration wants to deal with um specifically. I'm just trying to get a sense of how we are factoring in the planning ahead of time to make sure we're covering our bases and covering our costs.
I think that what we do is that we know how much it takes for us to operate a truck. And once we have those figures, we also know how much it would cost in terms of dumping fees. We take all of that, we pay and we have initial investment in toters. We take all that for the first year and then we're able to then discern how much we are meeting budget or above budget or under budget. So as you can see, Dave West, he literally drives the routes, so he'll know how long it will take. We talked to Chris about consumption of fuel. We talked to Nick about the wear and tear on the vehicles. And we know how many hours, man hours and women hours it takes to run the routes. And then we know how much the fees that we're going to be that we will charge. And we also will have any adjustment in those fees per the contract. And so we also know with regard to Steelton, what our collection rates are. And those collection rates right now are at 97%. And the accounts that are outstanding, we have a MuniLink, which is our system that we use to track payments. So we have that and so we know the exact addresses that we need to pinpoint in order to collect. And we use Steelton to do that. With regard to the new contracts, we're not going to be doing any of the billing. We will get paid per household. We get we'll get the distribution from the municipalities themselves and they'll have to deal with collection. So there's low, almost no risk there. So with all this, and we're working with the controller right now so that we can give the controller and city council, if you'd like, you know, access to the system. You can see what our expenses are and then what the revenue is. And we're going to be meeting over the next few weeks to come up with, you know, the system to do that. And it'll be transparent.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Any other questions regarding Public Works before I move on to Engineering and Neighborhood Services? All right, here none. Let's move on to that. I believe I saw, yep, Wayne is on the line. Wayne, I just kind of want to reiterate, my biggest question under your purview had dealt with the capital improvement projects. And I think the mayor covered a good portion of my my questions with that. Is there anything you want to add based on what the mayor presented in terms of timeline and kind of how things are allocated? allocated from your vantage point when it comes to some of the capital improvement projects we have happening and taking place and propose for 2021?
Certainly. Thank you, Council. Good evening. What the mayor shared is something I had put together maybe three weeks ago as we looked at the capital, the Fund Six cash flow analysis. And what wasn't shown on that screen was that we also will see reimbursements for all these various grants, right? Either from Pendot, Impact Harrisburg, DCD, what have you. So we will maintain a constant budget analysis of that Fund Six. What was also not included in there is a lot of these projects utilize look with fuel funds, which that money is available. I think the balance stands at around three and a half, four million. And so that funds, those funds can only be used, you know, for the street project. So, you know, although we have an aggressive construction schedule next year, you know, I think we'll be fine from cash flow perspective. Like the mayor said, we could if necessary issue stop work orders. But I think, you know, we should be happy. There's a lot going on with Pendot not putting out projects. We just put out two projects, North Seventh Street and Second Street are out to bid right now. Those are very large projects and they couldn't come at a better time when contractors are real hungry for work in Pendot. We don't have to compete with Pendot at the moment, so we should get a lot of competition, you know, in the bidding world for those projects. So we're excited. You know, those are due January 7th, both those project bids. Like I said, it couldn't have come at a better time. And, you know, we have a project manager, Mr. Ambrose Brock on board. And he's been doing a great job of, you know, managing contracts and costs. And, you know, because there's more than just the cost of the, you know, the contractor's cost. There's also the construction inspection professionals and things like that. So he's been doing a great job on that, does weekly reports actually that we could always share if you wanted that that level of detail. But certainly a monthly report is something we were going to do anyway. And I think the mayor had promised quarterly reports. So whatever format you'd like to see those in, we can definitely work to do it. That's our, you know, daily operation, if you will.
Thank you. Questions from my colleagues? Anyone have a specific question for Wayne? Go ahead, Council President.
Wayne, you were talking about the Seventh Street project. Are you talking about doing the roundabout? Will they be doing the roundabout, that location?
Correct, right. That's the project between Hur Street and Riley Street that includes the roundabout right there at Seventh and Riley by the federal courthouse.
Right. What is the courthouse connection that you're speaking of?
So the courthouse connection is a project that's not currently funded for construction, the Dolphin County Gaming Grant. We received a design, design, you know, grant for. So the county pays the consultant directly for the design. That is actually an extension of the Boyd Street Alley. If you recall, we did a presentation to council during that grant application. We applied for two grants for that. One was the Pendot Multimodal, one was Commonwealth Finance Authority Multimodal. So in addition to the Boyd Street Extension, there were some bus stops along Sixth Street for the transit connection to the courthouse. And then there was some streetscaping on Riley that, that, you know, we proposed too. That was actually a design concept that was presented by a local developer. So that was sort of, you know, three different little pieces.
So will you be notifying the public in enough time about the bus stop moves? That you're going to be relocating the bus stops from different locations, from different quarters?
Yeah, so CAT's actually doing a new, I think they're calling it like 2020 or something. I forget exactly the name of this new.
Mr. Farn, can you talk about that?
Right, right, right. So with that comes the Bus Stop Optimization Study that we had done. I think it was 2018, made some recommendations on locations of bus stops, especially on the Sixth Street Corridor where you have, you know, the courthouse and definitely want to serve that. And some of the, you know, the YMCA and some of the other areas where the stop locations may not be appropriate would get, you know, moved from far side to near side, things like that. So we're not talking moving them 10 blocks. We're talking about consolidating them all. And with that, we would expect, you know, improvements. There's another project on there. No, I'm sorry, it may be on there, but it actually comes out of the CDBG Fund. So it may not show up in the budget. It shows up in some of the reports. But the North Sixth Street Accessible Route between Emerald and Curtain, that's also includes two bus stops on the Sixth Street Corridor as well.
So are you relocating those bus stops?
I don't believe so. I'll have to look. Yeah, if they do, like I said, they move, you know, across an alley. It's not like they move two blocks up the street. But but I appreciate what you're saying because I know, you know, if you own a small business that serves a bus stop, like a little, you know, convenience store or something, you wouldn't want us taking the bus stop and moving it away. So.
But you certainly have to notify the residents because some senior citizens, you know, are still taking the bus. If you relocate, they're at one stop and it's not stopping there. Because as it stands right now, Sixth Street Corridor is about 10 or 15 stops.
Yeah, we can do more. I think I can take the results of the bus stop, the recommendations that came out of the bus stop optimization study and make those maybe easier, easy available on our website. A good example of a corridor where we did some bus stop relocation would be Hur Street between Cameron and 15th. I think we took six, six or eight stops and made four, you know, decent stops. And CAT's going to actually put the shelters that they took out of the Market Square and is planning on relocating those to Hur Street. So, yeah, I don't think we want to just move them just to move them. We want to make those improvements so that and the improvements to connect to them. So like the ramps and things to get on to them so that they're, you know, all fully ADA compliant and whatnot. So, yeah, point taken. I will make sure we do additional public outreach when relocating bus stops.
One of the things that was mentioned in public comment is some of the stop signs and the street signs are down. Have you taken a survey of how many street signs and stop signs are now down? And if so, when are they going to be replaced?
So in my mind, the street signs and stop signs are two different categories. Stop signs are regulatory signs, which we put as a priority one. And if there are any stop signs currently down, you know, I don't know of any. If I do, I will send somebody, I will, you know, make a call right now and have somebody come in and put a stop sign up. Street signs are a little bit different in that, you know, those aren't available off the shelf. So we actually, I'm actually glad you brought that up. We actually are budgeting a position for a sign shop technician. Currently, the city prints their own street signs. And I don't know if anybody realizes this, but every letter on a street sign is actually cut out by hand currently. Last year, the city invested in a in a street print, a sign printer, will you? And the sign printer, you know, as we are training on this machine and setting it up, we learned that the ink is about $4,000 a year. Yeah, it costs about $4,000 for a supply of ink and it only lasts one year. So we have to print, you know, 15, 10, 15 signs a day in order to capitalize on that investment. So we really need a dedicated individual to not only, you know, continually print signs like the street signs that we need or the or the street sweeping signs, you know, that the no parking signs and things that are specialty signs, but also to maintain that equipment to, you know, clean the ink jets and make sure it's properly maintained. So that there is a new position in the budget. I know the comment yesterday was about Kensington. I did confirm those signs are actually printed. And the one call should be done this week. So I would expect, you know, early next week, those will be up. But I did confirm that they were printed. We do have a pretty long list of street name signs that need to be printed. And we were kind of waiting. We actually have training on Wednesday and Thursday, which was postponed because of COVID. The gentleman's flying in from Chicago as part of that printer purchase to actually do the training. And that's been postponed several months. But I did confirm this week that he's coming to train them on how to utilize that new printer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Wayne? Go ahead, Councilmember Majors.
Yeah, and thanks, Wayne. And thanks for the update on the street signs. I know we have, you know, you and I have corresponded with regarding Ms. Stringer and also Ms. Watkins' request for the signs. And I'm glad we're going to be having the tech because I know a lot of the issue, especially in some of our communities that have some of the older street signs is getting those updated. So are we going to, since we have a tech, are we going to be looking to just, you know, come up with a plan or a program to replace some of the older, the older error signs with some of the new blue reflective signs?
Yeah, so I'm, this is a subject of debate. We have, we have budgeted $50,000 this year for Vision Zero improvements. The older signs that you're mentioning, especially the ones like that are concrete and steel posts that, you know, aren't the breakaway style. We do have a Vision Zero initiative to remove those because they're considered roadside hazards. So there is an ongoing discussion as to whether we use that $50,000 that's dedicated for Vision Zero initiatives in our capital budget on a sign project. Because we do have a list of those, what we consider roadside hazards, to have those removed by a contractor. Or whether we use city staff, but we'd have to, you know, borrow equipment from other departments to excavators and then perhaps have concrete, you know, repaired on. Or whether we utilize what we've done in the past is use that Vision Zero money for traffic signal improvements. And I think everybody can appreciate the reflective backplates and the pedestrian countdown improvements and things that we've been making over the past couple of years. So, you know, if council has any input into that, I think, you know, we would certainly be well received. But we basically have two projects right now that are competing for one, you know, one small, small pot of money. So we're going to, we're going to take the initiative, whether we do it with City Force or whether we decide to bid it out. We're going to, we're definitely going to take on that project in 2021.
Okay, great, yeah. And if you do have that list, I think sharing that with us would be helpful as well, as well as what, you know, if you're going to do the RFP, you know, what we anticipate the cost per, you know, removal and struggle that a lot of residents feel, particularly, as I said, with some of those, the old black and white signs, which are a little difficult to see in the evening hours. Additionally, since we are talking about, we have aggressive, I guess, capital projects planned for 2021. Just want to know what our MBE or WBE participation is going to, what we're going to be seeking for on some of these projects and how we plan on potentially holding that those and how we plan on holding those bidders accountable. Since, as you did mention, one of the things here come 2021 that will be to our benefit is that with Pendot doing less projects in the area, there will be, we hope to have more competitive. We hope to have more individuals seeking to bid on projects. So I'm just curious about how that's going to look like for 2021.
So we, for the two projects that are out there right now, we continued to cite the the city ordinance that has a goal of 15% MBE participation and the 2% WB participation. Where sometimes in the heavy highway world, it gets a little conflated is that Pendot utilizes a DBE format. And so oftentimes, it's not apparent who, you know, why they're a disadvantaged business. But we're going to stick to those requirements. I think what, if we take a page from Capital Region Water's playbook, what they have done, I've seen, is they would actually, because a lot of times what you see is you see good faith documentation that shows, hey, we contacted all these different businesses and our price is better than theirs, so we're not going to utilize them. And so we're only going to get a, you know, 2% participation or 5% participation versus the 15% goal. What I've seen Capital Region Water do in a couple of projects is actually reject all bids and rebid it. And that, you know, that can certainly be, that's a tool that the city could utilize to show that it's serious about those commitments. There is other, there's other approaches. I understand that sometimes there's just not available businesses in certain fields. And so there are also, you know, perhaps apprentice programs and things that we could require if we do decide to rebid. So I'd like to see what the bids come in and, you know, where we're at with those participation levels before, you know, making any sort of recommendation or to council or to the mayor's office. But we have prebid meetings scheduled for Wednesday and next week on both those projects. And we'll definitely, you know, have Jamal or Hillary or somebody, you know, from the administration that could emphasize the critical nature of the projects and those participation goals.
Wayne, I have one more question, if you don't mind. I know we are looking in the process of purchasing the MNT Building at Seventh and Bow Street. Are you looking to put that in the budget as far as to revert in the signs from the MNT to the City of Harrisburg?
So there is monies, I think it's 200,000 in actually the facility budget for fit out of the facility. So there will be the existing, the MNT ATM machine will stay. And so I do have an email into MNT to confirm what signage will be necessitated to accompany that, you know, the ATM, the machine lease that will remain. But, you know, other than that, I think the money is available in Dave's budget would be sufficient to, you know.
Convert the signs, okay.
Convert signage.
My only concern was a couple of residents reached out and they wanted to assure them that, I wanted to assure them that the ATM machine would stay there and the sign would also be there, the logo would be there for the MNT.
Yeah, I just don't know if it'll be the whole side of the building or if it'll be something a little more modest. But, you know, we can, we're still in negotiation on that small detail. But, you know, we, we can, we're still in negotiation on that small detail.
Keep us updated on that then, please.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Allen.
And Wes, were you all done as well?
Yes, I'm, I think I'm all done. Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Any other council members have a question for Wayne? All right, Wayne, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Parks and Recreation. I am going to defer to Councilmember Shereen Daniels to direct questions that she might have for Parks and Rec. Councilmember Daniels, are you available?
I'm mute yourself. Yes, sorry. Click the wrong button. So if someone from Parks and Rec go for quite a bit of detailed exchanges and programmatic offerings for this, this year and how you anticipate program delivery for next year to happen?
Dave Baker, are you on? I think I saw you.
Yep, I saw Dave and I was just seeing him on too.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. As far as the, the programming goes for Parks and Rec, we are definitely running a modified schedule, modified programming. We are following all CDC guidelines. We've gone to much smaller sized groups. For the most part, we try and do individual or just core individuals that are already together, you know, as far as group sizing for the parks. You know, we've moved away from the summer camps. We're doing, as far as like the food drives, instead of having everyone come by and more of a socialized event with the food. It's a grab and go. You know, we're hosting movie night so people can be spread out and, you know, watching, watching things out and still enjoying the outdoors, you know, the beautiful parks, but not necessarily have to be always in close contact of each other. So we have lots of different things going on. But, but as I stated before, we are definitely following, you know, all CDC and city guidelines to keep everyone as safe as possible.
Now, I noticed the Parks and Rec budget overall didn't increase that much. And I, you know, given the increased usage of our public spaces, why was that? Is there not more maintenance required for spaces? Is there not, or is there not more damage to spaces since they're used more frequently now? Or can you give me insight into that?
So we are requesting one additional employee for the Parks Maintenance Department to help support our Parks and Rec Department. You know, we, we are definitely doing our best to, you know, respect the times that we're in right now as far as keeping the budget as tight as possible. We are trying to do as much as we can with the funds that we are given. And, you know, we, we do a decent job at it. So, I mean, as far as additional costs, we do have them. The beauty of the department structure is some of those costs you might see in different departments. Like the example would be Parks Maintenance might have slightly increased overtime costs because they will be giving more support to the events that go on in the parks. You know, we, we might not have as high of a personnel cost depending on what's happening with COVID. So if we don't have as big of a summertime events, we will not have quite the cost involved, even though the smaller events might be more costly for, you know, per capita. But I guess the point of what I'm trying to say is we're doing our best to budget, but to budget tightly and to be respectful of the criteria that we're working with nowadays.
So, I mean, I think in this year in particular, our public spaces, you know, their value became much more pervasive and, you know, unclear, clearer. So in terms of maintenance of our parks, did you, did you see an uptick in work requirements? Did you see an uptick, uptick in supply requirements for making repairs and maintaining them?
We, we have seen a little more usage this, this year, especially whenever they did the major shutdown, whenever we had state parks shut down and all private parks shut down. You know, the city green space was about the only place that you could go predominantly for, you know, outdoor enjoyment. That did put some strain on us. But luckily, with the management staff we have and with our, you know, incredible workforce that we have in our Parks Maintenance Department, they, they are just, they're knocking out of the park. I mean, they are really being as efficient as possible and they're all pulling together. I mean, there's definitely a team aspect, especially with what's going on now. More than ever, of those individuals just, you know, kind of battening down the hatches. They are, they are getting things done because they, they see the value now more than ever of, you know, their role in the city here, which is neat to see.
And this year, how many years in terms of, sorry, that question was completely out of order. How, how many teens did we, how many minors, I should say, how many people under 18 did our summer programs serve this year compared to last year or the year before? What was the drop?
It, it absolutely did drop off. It's, it's, it's definitely dramatically reduced compared to last year just, just because of the nature of the programming, you know, just because of the way we had to follow the guidelines to keep everyone separate. So if you'd like exact numbers, Kevin Sanders is on the line, he might actually have exact numbers with him. But if, if he does not, that's something we can absolutely get you guys, you know, by tomorrow, no problem.
I think Kevin is on, but he may be muted. If you could get me that number, you can just email, email me that number.
Absolutely.
And then the other question I had, you know, it's, it's, I guess it's a facility. So this year, we weren't able to open the pools because of COVID. In a way, I think that was a little bit of a good thing because instead of, we didn't have to spend the money patching up the pool. The pool's the way we normally do every year, which kind of eats away from our ability for any kind of long-term pool repair, pool repairs or improvements. How much did we save in, in not opening up the pool? And is there a, was there a mechanism for saving that money to go to dealing with the bigger pool problems?
So you are correct, we did not open the pools this year. We saved roughly a little over $250,000. And council and the mayor both agreed that we were going to reallocate that money for a low income tree removal program that, you know, we're doing for the first time here in the city. So the funds were, they were utilized in another needed area. But, you know, to answer the question, it was about $250,000 that we saved this year.
Yeah, but the low income tree was $100,000, right?
Low income tree, we reallocated, I think it was $253,000 to the low income tree program.
And I think that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Any other questions for Park and Rec, Parks and Rec, I should say, and not the show, just our own department? Go ahead, Wes. I knew you had something from before.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess since we are talking about the, we, since we did reallocate money from the pools to the tree program, could you just provide us with some information and statistics on the tree program? So how many, how many trees have we removed thus far using, utilizing that 250,000?
So currently, we, we are, I mean, as you guys know, it's not a quick turnaround from once we get the reallocation to, you know, going through all the criteria we have to internally and then putting out the RFPs, receiving bids, you know, whatever the process may be. So that being said, we currently have three separate POs out for tree removal and tree pruning. We are trying to keep the businesses to small business owners if at all possible. So we're trying to split up as many of these contracts as we can. Again, we had to go out and our city forester had to go out and identify every single tree that we saw as a hazard. Then we had to internally identify or verify that all the individuals that the trees needed to be worked on were meeting our low income criteria. And once that was done, then, you know, obviously we went out and had contractors bid on these, these smaller jobs. So to date, we have not taken any trees down yet with the low income tree funding. But we are right on the cusp of doing, doing like three different contractors, starting work in multiple different areas of the city. I think we have roughly $100,000 that we'll, we'll be spending on this first group of contracts. It's, it's going to occur very shortly.
Okay, so, so the fund is still has 250,000 in it and then we'll be looking to start letting money. That's correct. So we haven't used any of that money for any other trees in the city?
Well, the, the money has been encumbered just recently after going through the RFP process. With trees, it's a little different because we have to identify each tree and bid out each tree because the prices can vary from 400 to, you know, $3,000 depending on the size of the tree. So it was a little labor intensive to get to where we are now where we've uncovered the funds. We've contracted with three providers and we're looking to roll that out in the next couple of weeks to start the tree removal process. But it took a little time to get up and running, but the 100,000 of the 250 is encumbered. And we're looking to utilize the rest of those funds and probably going to roll over the rest to next year so that we can continue the project into next year.
Okay. And then, and how, how were the verifications done for the qualifications?
So we, we got some, I guess we went down to Building Housing and we, we looked at the criteria that they had as far as income amounts to qualify someone as low income. And then, you know, we added 10% to that to give ourselves a basically a wider net of people that we could service, especially because of the short turnaround times. We, we went to legal, we got everything verified as legal to make sure that, you know, we were, we were above board with everything. And then once we did that, we drafted a letter that we could send out to the public that had these dangerous trees and mailers and Facebook information and city website information and general word of mouth information, notifying people about the program. And then, you know, we've, we've had, I can't tell you how many, how many call-ins, we've had walk-ins, we've had all kinds of people that inquire about it. And so that's basically what we did is we used the Building Housing forms to take like our baseline and then we worked from there to get that low income criteria.
Okay. And that, so there, and so what's the verification on the residence end? Do they provide you with that information?
Yes, they do. They, they, they will fill out the forms that we have, we have on the city website. So you can go to the city website and basically just click on the low income tree form and you can fill out the form and turn it into us. Or like I said, we have a lot of people call in and we have staff internally that actually fill out the form. If someone doesn't have the internet or internet access, they'll fill out the form for them. So, you know, we try and accommodate in every way we can with that.
Okay. And one question, as I'm looking at, I guess, some of the salaries underneath Parks Recreation and the arborist seems to have a significant step or great increase. I'm trying to understand how that was reached.
With regard to the arborist, we're looking to increase hours. We are not going to increase her hours. So it's going to revert to a 2% increase based on her evaluation. So that increase will not be there.
Okay. So then we'll have to, I guess we'll have to note that. And I guess that would be, I guess, one potential revision because it is a, as looking here, I mean, it would be a significant, it looks like it would be just over a 25% increase in, over year over year versus the 2% that you're now saying. So we'll have to look to make that adjustment in that position. Okay. And then, all right, I'll, I guess if that's the case, and I don't have any further questions on that, on that matter, I'll turn it back over to President Allen or it looks like President Williams, maybe.
Okay, Dave, now the program was set up to do senior citizens, remove a tree for senior citizens. How many senior citizen trees have you removed?
To date, I think we've used almost all of our senior tree funding. The amount of trees exactly, again, I can find you the tree number. I just, I keep more of an eye on the budget amount to make sure we don't go into negative. The, the beauty of the low income tree is a lot of our seniors, because of our low income rates, actually qualify for low income. So if we run short on our senior tree fund for this year at least, we have definitely been taking the seniors that absolutely qualify for low income. And instead of saying, hey, you need to wait until next year to qualify, we just throw them right into the low income program and, and get their situation taken care of for them this year.
Okay. I just need a list of all the trees that you removed, please. I mean, of the trees that you removed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding anything for Parks and Rec?
Yeah, sorry, just one more. Are we anticipating not, in the budget, are we anticipating not having a, a normal, I guess, summer enrichment program and, and the parks and with the parks and the pools?
So as far as the summer programming goes, it is, it is very liquid right now. It completely will depend on the CDC guidelines and COVID situation. So we, we have budgeted for certain programs. We have budgeted to open the pools next year. But, you know, we, we definitely will have to kind of stay on our feet whenever it comes to what we'll actually be able to do next year.
Okay. I guess the other question I have would be around the other, looks like another step increase for the Special Events Logistics Coordinator.
I'm looking up here. Without looking, I'm looking it up now, but it should be a 2%.
Now, there's a, yeah, it looks like.
What was your question?
The Special Events Logistics Coordinator and the increase there.
Which page are you on?
There's one on, I'm not. Uh, there's one on, I'm looking at page, uh, 86.
Uh, that's, uh, John Snidicker. He is currently hired, uh, with the city on a hourly basis under temporary. Um, we decided to make him salaried, um, for 2021 to save the city some money. Hopefully that answers your question.
And I, I can go into more detail on that if you'd like.
Okay. So, but that looks like at least from, as I'm looking at event logistics through here, that would be almost a 30% increase.
Yeah. So, so that would not be so much like a percentage increase with the pay. Um, that's more of a, um, an hourly increase for the need for the position. And a lot of that does come down to the fact that, you know, with the events that, that we are still doing, a lot of serve the public here, we have a lot more prep and there, there's a lot more going on behind the scenes. So, you know, we, we might've last year had an event that serviced a thousand people and we only needed, uh, two parks maintenance staff and, um, you know, we, we would use one person from events and, you know, we'd use John for the, the beginning of the event for a couple of hours. Um, you know, now we'll service half that amount of, of residents and we'll have event staff, both of them here, the entire event. And we'll have John here, uh, a day before mapping things out and during the event. And then, you know, after the event, we'll have, um, three times as many parks maintenance staff for every single event. Just to make sure that again, we're, we're keeping everyone safe while having these events, um, because the last thing we'd want is, you know, to have a, a, a bad, um, you know, and have a, have a problem with, with a, a group of people, you know, not keeping them safe and, and, you know, not being able to do those events and service the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Dave, how many hours will he be working per week?
Uh, so it, it, what we did, we changed it to a salary base, um, because if, if we keep it at the hourly rate, um, he, you know, he, he actually comps the city. I almost say comps. He, he will, um, you, you know, not every single hour, I think, is, is billed to us, uh, depending on what the type of work is. So as far as the amount of hours he works, it, it's, uh, it's definitely not more than 30 hours, uh, per week.
So you have him on as a part, you have him on as part-time at a salary of 20,000?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were already using him on a temporary basis because we had two other individuals who could do the same type of, uh, coordinated work that he does. I'm not happy with it. Pardon me?
Uh, I, I was just, uh, I was just going to say that, that John actually does a very, very specialized, um, type of work that Link can really attest to as well. Uh, he's the only one that, that I know of personally that, that's certified, um, in, in, in half of what he's certified in. And he, he really does, uh, keep the city, um, in, in the clear as far as legally and safety wise, um, in regards to, uh, traffic flow and, um, you know, keeping, doing anything with the event of has anything to do with any sort of streets, um, or roads near them.
Well, I'd advise you to keep a close eye on him. Um, his interaction with our community doesn't sit well with me. He does not know how to communicate and he's really, uh, uh, has given some of the residents a hard time as far as when they request the services. So, um, I'm not really happy to hear that we, we put him on as part-time when, you know, he caused a lot of problems uh, with the residents in the city of Harrisburg.
Understood.
That's all I have, Mr. Allen.
Okay. Great. Anyone else have anything for Parks and Rec? All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to the building and housing.
Uh, could I answer that, uh, question that, uh, Shemaine had answered, asked? I had a tough, technical difficulties. Uh, yes, um, Shemaine, in, um, 2020, our numbers were dramatically down as far as, uh, how many children we were able to reach. Um, we probably only reached, um, probably us, I'd say less than 500, uh, with the food program and the movies, the movie nights, uh, we had a lot of repeat. Um, people come back to, uh, the food program that was a grab and go, um, twice a week, which was on Mondays and on Thursdays. And, uh, the movie nights were well attended. Uh, we did have a, a solid amount of adults attend as well as the children. Um, that was a very positive experience this year that, um, we were going to implement besides COVID, but definitely it opened the doors for us to do a better job because we were more prepared, uh, to cover this aspect than we would have been had we been running a full program. We're able to focus some things and see a lot of things that we would have missed in all honesty, um, by just being in a situation that we have been in this past year. Um, so we, we did a lot of pivoting throughout, um, the spring and into the summer months. We were more spread across as a bureau. And, uh, we covered a lot of different things and, uh, hope I answered your question as far as, um, those numbers for, um, the summer programs for the kids.
Um, is, what were the numbers for 2019?
Uh, 2019, we probably serviced over, um, at least 1,200 different children, um, with our regular program. Because on an average week, we're probably seeing anywhere from 250 to 300 different kids, Monday through Friday. Um, so that's definitely something that, um, when you don't have a day-to-day, um, nine-week summer program and having staff out there, you know, that's 80, 85 staff members that pretty much out there, mixed in with the swimming pools. We're seeing a lot of different kids and a lot of different families are being touched by that. So that's definitely something that was missed, um, this year for us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Um, I'm going to move on to, uh, building and housing and I'm going to defer to Chair Building Housing Committee, my colleague, Councilmember Bowers. So I'm going to turn the mic over to you.
Thank you. Um, good evening. I believe I saw Ms. Williams on the line.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a few questions for you.
Okay.
Many are, um, some of the ones that I pre-submitted. I just wanted to share the information with the public and then, um, one, just relative to the department's budget in general, just to clarify.
Okay.
So the first one, um, can you just please provide an overview of the department's budget? I'm asking because, um, we've received a number of public comments and demands, um, regarding redirecting budget allocations to housing. So if you could please speak to, um, the department's general budget, I would appreciate it.
Um, you, for each, for each program, are you?
I was really trying to get at that, um, the majority of the funding is our federal funds. Um, they're not something that we can directly allocate, uh, from our general fund.
That's correct. So, um, that's a little hard to answer because we also have CARES funds, um, included with that. So I can give you the total allocations for 2020 as of right now. Um, for CDBG funds, we have, uh, 1.974, uh, $656,000. For home, we have 489,839. And for ESG, we have 167,683. Now that, that is the regular allocations for 2020. Okay. Now for the, um, let me just pull it up here. For the COVID, to include the COVID rounds of funds, um, for CDBG, we have a total of, uh, round one was, uh, 1.152977 million dollars. And then we received, uh, a round two of 578,217. And that was for CDBG COVID funds.
Okay.
And then for ESG, um, we received 1.6 million dollars. And then, um, we received another round just recently that we're going to be doing an addendum for, for round three of COVID funds of CDBG. And that's going to be 464,497.
Okay. Uh, thank you for clarifying those numbers.
You're welcome.
Um, my next lines of questioning are relative to, uh, the lead program and the home program. Um, what is the current status of the lead program?
Okay. So right now, um, with the pandemic, uh, the rise in cost for construction has happened. Um, the material delivery, it has been many delays due to the pandemic. Um, we are still running the program and we are still on, um, up to date with testing. We have 31 units that, uh, we have tested, when I say units, I mean homes, um, that we have tested as to date. 19 have been completed. Um, we do test every week. Um, as of right now, HUD has, uh, suspended, um, all grading for, uh, the lead program until after the first of the year. Um, so with that being said, we are still on target with the units that we are doing as of right now.
Okay, great. Um, that was my next question that I wanted to know, um, how the, our benchmarks had changed given the COVID-19 pandemic. But it's good to know that we are still, um, on target there.
Yes.
Uh, can you please speak to the status of the home program?
Okay. So, um, as far as, as for the home program, uh, due to the pandemic, we did re, redirect focus to home development. Uh, we started, um, doing, um, currently we're doing contracts for TLC, Tri-County, YMCA, Bethel. We're in the process of doing those contracts as of right now for the home development. Uh, we did focus on changing, um, home program to HRP program, which comes out of CDBG funds. So instead of them using hip funds, we separated home development. We serviced them and now we're also servicing the HRP program and that is for, um, home, to assist homeowners with repairs and to focus on seniors, 62 or older or low-income families.
Okay. Thank you. And so, um, how have our benchmarks changed given the pandemic for the home?
So with the home, it has, it has been difficult because now with the pandemic, again, the materials, it's taken longer for materials to come. Um, and also the costs have went ups, you know, due to the pandemic. We are also trying to play catch-up because we weren't allowed to go out to homes due to the pandemic, everything going on. So we're late starting. Um, right now we have three homes completed under contract in the home program, home in HRP program. 13 homes are in processing. So we're in the process of getting 13 homes contracted.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would like to see better numbers, um, but we're, we're, we're doing better now that we're doing, um, going out and inspecting and actually doing the work again.
Okay, sure. And we'll extend some grace. We are currently in the pandemic, so that's understandable. I just wanted to know, um, how everything had changed and, and what had evolved with the programs really.
Yes.
Um, so, let's see. President Williams provided the public with information regarding the rental assistance, uh, program that's available for rental mortgage and utility assistance. I was just curious, could you please share the application deadline? And I believe the application is available in English and in Spanish. Is that correct?
That is correct. And it started December 9th and it ends December 22nd. We are doing it on a first come, first served basis. Um, we do ask for, um, everyone to supply the, the, the documents that we provided on the website and it is on the application as well. Um, we do have a flyer up to try to help out with all the documents that we need so that the process can be a little easier for everyone. Uh, we know that the traffic's going to be very heavy, you know, because we are trying to help so many people. But we will, um, help up to $5,000 per household. And the good thing is that, um, let's say that the person owes maybe $2,500 in back rent or future rent and they owe $2,500 in utilities due to COVID. We can pay both of them as long as it's under 5,000.
Okay. That's very good to know and I'm hopeful that, uh, people will apply for this, uh, program.
We've been getting a lot of calls. So, yeah, I mean, people are very interested in the program. I'm just thankful that we can help.
Me too. I, I'm, I'm very grateful, uh, for the opportunity to help our residents. Um, I do have another question. I guess this would be directed either to the mayor or Mr. Woolley. Uh, Ms. Williams is currently serving, uh, in the interim director position within the Department of Building and Housing. I'm curious to know when she will be promoted to the director of the department. She's been serving in this capacity for some time and I believe that she's leading the department very effectively.
Well, uh, I think that, um, we have seen a marked turnaround in the department. I've told, and I, 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 I meet with Lily, uh, virtually, uh, uh, every week. Um, and so we've seen market improvement, uh, in the department as a whole. Uh, when I congratulate her, I think it's, uh, only a matter of time, uh, before, um, I offer her to city council to make her permanent.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions, Ms. Williams. Thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. Do we have any other questions for building and housing at this time? Thank you. The, uh, final two areas I wanted to, I just put up, um, particularly to the mayor's office and the legal department, are there any specific questions to them from a budgetary perspective? And if anyone can check my math, have I missed any department that we have not covered, um, tonight? Does anyone, can anyone correct my math, Councilmember Bowers?
Um, I was just wondering if we could speak to communications. I, I just wanted to note, um, their communications needs that were addressed in the proposed budget. That's all.
Got it. I would, uh.
And I would like the law bureau as well.
Okay, perfect. So first we'll go communications with, uh, Moment and then, um, we will go to Neil covering from the law bureau. Go ahead, uh, uh, Councilmember Bowers to Moment.
Thank you. Uh, good evening again, Moment. I just have one question. If you could please provide an overview of the city's communications needs that are, are addressed in the proposed budget.
Can't hear you.
Hey, Moment, you're muted.
Yes, you are. Still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, I'm muted. Okay, sorry about that. I was just saying, uh, you know, um, uh, good evening, Councilwoman. Good evening, uh, council members. Thank you for this opportunity, uh, to speak with you, uh, today. I guess I can start with a very general overview and I'm happy to discuss any details, um, you know, after that. Uh, but, um, the, the proposed budget supports our need for public accessibility and efficient internal and external communications. Uh, we're responsible for the management of the 311 call center, uh, the community support ticketing system, Atrium Help Desk. Uh, we manage media relations and, um, part of that involves, uh, organizing press conferences, issuing press releases and media advisories. And we handle the city's graphics, uh, photo, audio, video, social media content, uh, its creation and distribution and print and digital materials. We also manage Channel 20, the government access station and, um, for the, for the transmission of city meetings and events as well as informational video content, um, for all the city departments. We work with all the city departments, uh, on a variety of, uh, various materials. Uh, the Bureau, uh, through the city's partnership with Visit Hershey-Harrisburg also manages social media platforms, promotional content creation for Explorer HBG as part of its marketing strategies. And we also work with, uh, city departments on informational and marketing campaigns. And we also work with the city departments on informational and marketing campaigns of government services, resources and other programs for effective communication to everyone, all constituents.
Okay, thank you. And you believe that the proposed budget will assist in carrying out all of those duties? And do you have adequate support?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other question.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. Moment, since you're here visibly, I want to thank you for all of your help as coordinating all of our virtual meetings since the pandemic began. You're kind of the face behind the screen when it comes to our council meeting, so it's good to see you on here tonight, so. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure to serve. Any other questions for Moment while we're here? Go ahead, Wanda.
No, I say I concur with that. He's done an outstanding job trying to coordinate Zoom meetings.
Thank you. That's our new normal. Hopefully it's not our permanent normal, though.
It is our permanent normal.
All right, thank you. And I, any other questions for Moment? All right, perfect. Moving on to Law Bureau, I know that Councilmember Daniels had a question for Neil. Go ahead, Councilmember Daniels.
Neil, do you mind going over what's been happening with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission this year? What's the state? How many complaints? How many investigations? How many closed cases? And what does the rationale for lowering the salary of the person in that role? It's, so there's like a two thousand dollar cut.
Sure. So you, and you mean the Harrisburg Human Relations Commission, right?
Sorry, sorry.
Yes, because I haven't, they haven't talked to me from the other place, so. So most of the year, you know, the position was empty and now we have Ms. Sibberling is very, very well experienced coming on board. Before she was hired earlier in the year, you know, we've reevaluated the position and determined that it really had two core functions. One was an investigative skill, which is to deal with complaints both externally and internally, be able to conduct a thorough and proper investigation confidentially, write reports, recommend, make recommendations and deal with the policies that, that caused those to happen. Ms. Sibberling does, has experience in that. And the other part was to do training, both putting together training materials and actually conducting training or connecting city staff to training. The prior position when the salary went up was to, in the prior role, was to, had a more liaison role on top of all of that. Where Sean was out and about doing other things outside of the investigations and the trainings with various agencies and organizations. And, and our observation was it made it harder to timely complete those assignments, not because of not working, but because there were too many assignments between the three sets of responsibilities. And there, there's a serious training need and, and someone who can conduct a thorough, proper investigation in a timely manner is very important to the position. She's also the liaison to the Harrisburg Human Relations Commission and acts as their liaison to the city and conducts the investigations that come through the agency. For this year, unless I am forgetting something at the very beginning of COVID, and I don't think I am, there's a total of four complaints this year. Two of them were misdirected to us. That is, they were events not from Harrisburg or involving anything in Harrisburg. They thought we were a different agency and we directed them to the correct place. There were then two that warranted investigation. One, I believe, is resolved or withdrawn. We had to appoint a special investigator to it because of the nature of it. It was connected to people in the city and other complaints in the city that had too, too much involvement in frankly, in this building for the, for the two opposite parties. So instead of us investigating either side, we appointed someone else to do that. I believe that is withdrawn. I'm waiting for a final discussion with the investigator, who was a former district attorney, who's very capable of conducting an investigation. And then we have one that's ongoing right now. That's in, in the, in the fact gathering discussion stage with the parties.
Do you mind reminding me again, what portion of the year we didn't have a person in that role?
Deb has only been here, I don't think she's been here four weeks yet. So.
So there was no one from January till now or?
No, there, I think Sean left last year, but I'll tell you, twenty twenty is, is my, frankly, my calendar in my head is not as good as it would be normally from this particular year, so twenty twenty. But I believe Sean left the end of last year.
That's correct.
So who was doing the investigations and negotiations while?
The Law, the Law Bureau had to do those and originally it was Ron Rouse, who was our deputy. And we would segregate him out from the office to do them. And then he moved on to the Commonwealth. And then in the whole long part of the first part of the year, we didn't have any complaints to investigate. So which was just fortunate. But the, but the Law Bureau would assign someone as an investigator. We had just assigned one of the attorneys to investigate right before Deb came on. And she transferred that investigation to Deb, the last, the most recent one that came in.
And do you see any changes for twenty twenty-one? Or I guess what the, what are the goals of for twenty twenty? I know it's hard given where we are, but what is?
So we are very fortunate to have Deborah come on to the city of Harrisburg. She has a wealth of experience and some very difficult assignments in government. She, you know, part of it's dictated by whether there's complaints, right? There's, there's that. So how much time that takes up, but she has been working on rewriting policies and has just done a very good job so far in, in modernizing them, making them more concise and really getting down to the points of them. We expect she will have a significant role in both the training of the new CLAC board. You know, the Law Bureau is tasked with that training. I've talked to her and she's given me some outlines of ideas of how to, how to approach it from her perspective. And she, we expect she'll probably be involved if there are these new civilian employees with the police bureau that she would involve in assisting and coordinating training for them as well, just because of her extensive HR background in her career. So, you know, we expect that if that, those positions are approved, we expect that will be part of her work early next year. And after that, it's a little hard to say. The main thing is we have some very old policies that need to be upgraded. And, and she seems to be able to do it efficiently with a lot of knowledge behind her, which is really what we need.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Neil? All right, as we begin to wrap up at least formal proceedings of the budget hearings, one lingering question we started with, believe it or not, yesterday. I know when we first received the, the budget resolution, there were several, there were a significant amount of typos, things that need to be corrected. Have we gone through and made those adjustments in the budget prior to actually submitting for final approval by council?
And maybe Mark can address this, but we talked about this earlier today. There's two different things we're talking about. When we talk about the budget ordinance, we're talking about the very beginning sheet that comes separately from the, what I call the binder, which is the backup material. For whatever reason, there were three different software used. In the back of your binder is a perfectly clean version of that without all the, all the errors that happened in the translation. We're going to bring that down as a corrected version for council to vote on. So it's already in front of you as part of the exhibit. It's just a processing problem between software.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of make sure we had some clarity to that. It, is it okay with you if we move to public comment right now before we have any closing comments from us on, on the budget hearings?
Okay, that's fine. Neil, I just have one question before we move to public comment. Since there's, there's a need for us to address the emergency declaration that you're going to send down. Do we need to introduce it tomorrow and then I am going to schedule a meeting for Monday at five thirty?
And that would be sufficient. It's an emergency declaration. It has two components. One's an ordinance, one's a resolution.
Okay.
Has to vote on the resolution to make it effective immediately. And then, then, then the bill can be voted on, on Monday.
Monday, with a three-day period, okay.
Three, three counts a day, yes.
Okay, Mr. Allen, is there any other departments that you have to?
I think I got them all and I apologize if I've missed anyone, but I believe I've covered everyone. I tried to take notes before the meeting to make sure, so I think we're good.
Okay, so Neil, will you have that information available for us tomorrow to introduce it and then we'll vote? Okay. That'll be fine. Thank you. Okay, go ahead for public comment, Mr. Allen.
Yes, go ahead. Sardan, are you ready to proceed with public comment?
Yes.
All right, perfect.
And Ms. Houston, if they are the same comments, you can just give their name so that we can put it on record. You don't have to read the same comment over and over again.
Understood.
Thank you.
This comment is from Najima Robinson. She says, hello, my name is Najima Robinson. I am a Harrisburg city resident with three children. I am also a small business owner within city limits. I am reaching out to discuss extra funding for the police department that clearly can't do their jobs correctly without bias. If they were, there would be no, there would not be so many nonprofit organizations starting up this year. We as Black residents are sick of being pushed under the rug to cover up the department's need for violence. Yes, I am talking about the corruption within the department. With that being said, there are much better ideas for this funding for twenty twenty-one budget. Things like residents need more help with their rent and utilities without all the restrictions of what this new grant that was passed. What about the residents who need extra money for bills just because they are homeschooling their children? Those residents had higher water, gas and electric bills they can't pay. Most residents had to purchase new internet items to extend the connection or new modems. Most people have more than one child using electric and more, et cetera. The federal government passed the bill to allow the P EBT again, but PA hasn't said anything about paying that to residents. The maximum allotment for SNAP benefits is not enough. Another item that should be on the table as well, education. There is over five, five hundred billion left in the Carers Act for educational purposes, but it is not being used for education. Why? House Bill twelve thirty introduced an education stimulus for one thousand dollars per student. For one stimulus for one thousand dollars per student. This is extremely important. Our children are failing with online schooling, but what are we doing to help? We need funding for tutoring, tuition, supplies, et cetera. Putting more money into a system that is broken will only force your residents to be your doorstep route, to be at your doorstep rallying. Mayor, you are already on your last term because you have shown you are not for the people of Harrisburg as a whole by only mid, but only midtown. Prove to us that you deserve another term. I keep, keep in mind who the new strongholds of voting are. It is no longer the older white community, but the younger Black community. I hope you make the right choice. Blessings, Najima Robinson. And next comment is from Christina Castalucki. She says, thank you for taking the time to consider the needs of residents, including my comments. I am disappointed that a budget is being rushed for approval with an increase in police spending. Even if this is a typical timeline or if you've, or if you feel you've given ample notice, please keep in mind that we're in the midst of a global pandemic and a major racial justice movement. Neither of those justify expediting increases to police spending. We have learned both through anecdotal stories and empirical evidence that more police don't make cities safer. Rather, increased funding for community initiatives and a decreased police presence are dollar for dollar more effective. Growing up as a white person, it was easy for me to feel reassured and safer when I saw police. But that's not the case for my Latinx family members, my Black friends and neighbors, or indeed the majority of Harrisburg residents. Therefore, it's beginning to feel like the mayor and even the certain, and even certain city council members appearing at public marches and co-signing statements was simply an act of performance allyship. Now, though, as the tough decisions are being made, folks are trying to take the simple route. Route, excuse me, please bear in mind this route is only simple on paper and only simple if you're thinking in the short term. I've heard that excuse that police are working harder than ever and facing more scrutiny and public harassment. So are first responders, delivery drivers, the unemployed, the underemployed, trans people seeking healthcare and families being evicted from their homes through no fault of their own. I propose that we decrease the twenty twenty police budget by five percent and allocate the additional funds directly into our community through wellness programs and housing security initiatives. I also encourage you to think beyond your current seat, whether or not you're seeking a future term and consider the other public comments sent over the past weeks. Rushing through an ill-considered proposal is likely to have severe lasting consequences on our, on our community. And this is Christina Castalucki, Harrisburg resident. Let's see. This comment is from Rachel Lee Peacock. Dear City Council, Eric released the budget for the city the week of the Thanksgiving holiday and now just two weeks later, there is a voted schedule, a vote scheduled. All broadcast talks about it, wait, all broadcast talks about it have been during times that are largely inaccessible to hardworking residents. This speaks to the lack of transparency as well as consideration and planning. It's crucially important that you delay this vote until December twenty-ninth so the community has enough time for input and review and can direct substantial funds to relieve Harrisburg's most immediate needs for the good of all. The budget as it currently stands gives Harrisburg Police their largest increases in city history, a total of nearly three million dollars in new and unspent funds. How have they proven themselves worthy of this? Harrisburg Police have notoriously been unable and or unwilling to provide demographic data regarding their arrests. When I was part of a local organization, we had issued several right-to-know requests which went unanswered. I believe this is one of the same comments that I read yesterday, so I'm just going to respectfully move on. And Rachel Lee Peacock is a Harrisburg resident. Let's see, the next comment is from Sheldon Stevens. He wrote, please stop extra police funding. And that was it. Let's see. This one is from Rachel Gold. Gold and I believe this is also the same comment that she submitted yesterday as well. Looks like it's a double comment, so I'm not going to read her comment again because it is the same comment. And this one is from Stephen McHale. And he says, dear City Council, I am a city resident and homeowner living in the nineteen hundred block of Green Street and I ask that you take further time to review public comments before finalizing the budget. In general, I ask simply that a very hard take, simply that a very hard look is taken at any increase of a budget to the police department and suggest that it could just as easily be spent in areas upstream of the police that will result in a similar outcome, a safe and thriving city for all residents. I have seen the proposal that the increased budget will go to new hiring for non-police employees that will fill certain social roles. I do agree with this in principle, but I wonder if twenty-plus new employees is necessary or overkill. Can we have a gradual system that slowly increases once the efficacy of these employees are shown? And during the interim, we allocate funding in other areas that are also needed. I simply ask that the outcome of these proposed hirings will meet the needs expressed through the summer's protests. It is their precedent in other cities where the new type of employees produce what they are looking for and where is the accountability if it does not? And that is from Stephen McHale. This comment is from Tyler Chick. And he says, dear City Council, I must insist that you delay the budget vote in order to allow more time for public comment and proposal of amendments that serve all Harrisburg residents. The nearly three million dollars in additional funding to police is unconscionable in light of the economic and social climate. Our city has been hit hard by the pandemic and its considerable fallout, including hundreds, hundreds of eviction hearings on court dockets despite a federal moratorium. We call for the city to enact its own moratorium on eviction for any reason through the emergency powers of the mayor until residents no longer need to choose between their work and their health. Any police reform, new hires or new positions regarding public safety and oversight of police should come from the existing funds allocated to police, not by an increase in police budget. Additionally, these measures should exist independently of the police department. Over time, we as Harrisburg residents demand that, that city budgets are diverted further to meet our need. These needs are not being met by our police departments who respond to crime after it happens. Our money should be directed at the root causes of crime by funding youth programs, public schools and access to continued education, public health and affordable housing. This is a long-term project, not just a response to the current conditions. You may feel that city, the city does not engage with your position. You may feel that city, the city does not engage with your positions or this process enough. Show us that when we do, you listen and serve every member of the public in the best possible way, even when that way is bold. Solidarity, solidarity forever, Tyler Chick, a Harrisburg resident. The next comment is from Pamela Parsons. She states, Mayor Papenfuss and Harrisburg City Council members, during my nearly 40 years of living in Harrisburg, oh wait, this might be. I believe this also is a repeat comment. I'm going to move on as well. There is a comment from John, excuse me, Jeremy Derby, Derby, Uptown Harrisburg. He says, greetings, City Council. I am Jeremy Derby of the Uptown area. Why in the hell do police need a $3 million funding to them when they have not shown any type of regard for Harrisburg citizens as a collective, specifically black and brown people of color? Reallocating funds to community needs should be top priority. Wasting money on police to do what they've been doing, which is absolutely nothing different than what they've been, than what they've been doing. Also, the lack of access to COVID testing while residents face evictions is astounding. This is trifling and beyond raggedy. This is not how you properly govern a community. I am not grateful for your service and your so-called prompt attention to our concerns. One second here, I have to open up this comment. This comment is from Liam Hicklin. He says, dear City Council, we, the residents of Harrisburg, are facing unprecedented crisis. Hundreds of people within the city limits are facing eviction. Mental health emergencies are on the rise. The city has seen a spate of youth shot down in the streets by their peers while schools remain closed. And as a result of this pandemic, and businesses are languishing. Meanwhile, residents who don't have access to transportation, don't have fresh affordable groceries available, and residents who need to travel to work rely on poorly managed public transportation. We deal with patchwork roads, a predatory parking authority, and a sewerage system that dumps into the river that borders our city. Given all these problems during a year when a revolutionary awakening to police brutality induced the call to defund a criminally militarized police presence in the United States, Eric Papenfuss made the bold and brave move to propose padding Harrisburg Police Department's budget by over $2 million. Two million, $2 million is not nearly enough money to address the various challenges we face as a city. Excuse me. But it is obvious to any resident paying attention that there are more urgent needs than getting new toys for the police. I hope that council recognizes this and refuses to adopt the proposed budget until the funds raised by city taxpayers and by the predators who man our parking meters are dispersed more equitably. Instead of investing in crime fighting, we should be investing in crime prevention, which starts with providing the basic human needs our residents lack. And there is another comment from Rachel Hadrick. She is in the 300 block of Hamilton Street. She said, I am writing to ask City Council to reject the current budget proposed, which increases the police department's budget by more than $2 million. What the residents of this city have asked for is accountability. There is simply not enough education or relationship building that could convince the residents that this, there is additional count, additional accountability in our police department if there is not. Healthy, trusting relationships in any context are built on mutual accountability. When one side is, is left with no means to impose accountability, there will be no trust. Trust cannot be manufactured. While I understand that there are barriers to holding officers accountable embedded in existing law and contracts, I implore our city officials to be courageous and address this issue head-on as opposed to attempting to placid demands by throwing money at a problem without regard for whether the solution actually addresses it. Throwing money at a problem is just another one-size-fits-all solution about an ineffective, about as ineffective as the practice of criminalizing any and all unwanted conduct. It is time that our government on all levels actually look at cause, causes of society's ills and implement solutions that are driven by facts and data. This comment is from Anna White. She says, the people of Harrisburg have continued to ask for data collection to be used to validate the movement of proposed policy, increased budget proposals, inadequate accountability for law enforcement procedures in the city. To date, there has been several examples of the data not being presented. We cannot in good conscience set out to accept solution-driven programming without data to support what is being accounted for through the enormous increase. In reviewing the budget, one of the things that is clear is that the citizens who have been consistently accused of turning a blind eye are being unable to listen to the pleas and cries of the chief and other elected officials have once again been ignored in asking for and receiving what they need to strengthen the bridge between law enforcement and community. Data collection and analysis has been completed in terms of preventative strategies, and all efforts in this budget continues to show elevated accountability to civilian oversight of its own people with the financial benefit going directly into the law enforcement budgets. To add clarity to what has already been ignored or dismissed, the rallies, marches, and all meetings thereafter had clearly defined goals, redirecting funds from law enforcement, not increasing its budget. Providing budget increases, increase, albeit through civilian positions, does not honor that promise made by elected and selected officials. We ask for programming which directly speaks to social services and civilian opportunities and funding for community-based program, programming, and we, we receive civilian positions within the umbrella of the same organization which continues to have a wounded relationship with its citizens. We ask for reimagining the existing budget but are now met with an increase in the budget. All demands to make stronger accountability avenues to law enforcement has been met with readjusted programming which increases the weight of civil obedience, cultural competency, and community collective impact back on the citizens, who no increased accountability added directly to the space of law enforcement as requested. If there are any, any, please left on deaf ears. It is that, is that of the citizens whose requests and clearly defined desires, objectives continue to be dismissed for the betterment of the vision that is not that of the city's citizens, but of elected officials. We ask that a more comprehensive explanation and discussion on desired outcomes with this new programming become available to those communities most affected by these decisions. And that is Anna White of Allison Hill. This comment is from Kamika Campbell. Dear members of City Council, last night, the city administration, particularly Eric Grover and Carter, played in our faces with over four hours of pro-police propaganda. They left public comments for last and then complained that they were having a late night. They are treating the budget proposal as a foregone conclusion. Residents won't stand for that. The mayor wants to overfund the police bureau when they clearly did not need spend all of the city residents' dollars that they were allocated last year. Mismanaged funds should not lead to more funding. Eric's leadership skills and ability to connect with the community have always been horrible, but this is a pure slap in the face to each and every resident of Harrisburg. We are tired of asking. We demand that you all do not keep bolstering a police department that does not actually listen to the people and mismanages funds. We demand that you do put money into all of the other parts of the city services that have been cut over years, public works, engineering development, neighborhood services, park and recreation, and facilities, and most importantly, building and housing. And we don't need alleged community safety associates who are to help with the quality of life issues as a part of the police bureau. Why would residents trust them when they don't already trust the police? It will be no different than, excuse me, what we have now. We will just have 12 more people whose job it will be to explain away the police, why the police harass and intimidate the residents of Harrisburg with their power. That was and will never be community policing. We don't need people harming us and then explaining away nicely why the harm was warranted. This is over. Take community public safety out of the police department. Policing is not the only type of public safety. I won't even get started on how the mayor refuses to do his one job and is waiting on, on tried and overtaxed residents to reach out to him in order for him to help them. What a sick, ergurous, and asinine way to avoid, to avoid responsibility for what is happening in the city. I am extremely disturbed but not surprised that Eric, Carter, and Grover continue to be so tone deaf and ignore city residents. But that's fine. Here's your fair warning. If you pass any kind of budget that gives bloated amounts, bloated, excuse me, amounts of money to the Bureau of Police and not to vital community service, services that need to be bolstered during the COVID-19 pandemic, we will organize every resident in this city to vote each one of you out. It's that simple. I hope you have a great meeting. And that is from Kamika Campbell. And then this comment is from Charlie De Bruner. It was sent to Mark Woolley. So it says, Mark, I just wanted to tell you how pleased I was to receive your year-end close-out memo. It was perfect. This will be the first time since I have been here that the books have been closed properly. Bill and I have been commenting how much more cooperation there has been, there, there is between our two offices since you have been managing it. I really appreciate it. Thanks, Charlie. Second comment, or another comment. Oh, sorry, this is another comment that came in from Otto Banks, 1200 Block of 19th Street. Says, dear concerned citizens, the city budget is a multifaceted document that expresses spending, resource allocation, describes services provided, and services as a means of communication between citizens and elected officials. Interplay between elected officials and input from citizens via budgetary hearing and public access to the budget further enhances, enhances the democratic process involved in the public programming and financing. The mayor is charged with the task of taking the lead and determining budgetary policies, and council is responsible for examining the mayor's proposed budget and has the authority to make amendments before final approval. The fiscal year for the city of Harrisburg is January 1st to December 31st, and the actual budget preparation process usually begins in early August. Pursuant to the city's administrative code, the mayor's proposed budget is presented to City Council at the last legislative meeting in November, at which time the document should be made available to the public. During the Budget and Finance Committee meetings set by council, all department, departments present to council, oh, present to council an estimate of the revenues and expenditures required to continue the function, functions of government. City councils then must adopt the final budget by ordinance no later than December 31st. Within 15 days after the, the adoption of the budget ordinance, a copy must be filed with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. But that being said, City Council has the power and authority to delay the legislative process in order to allow the taxpayers of Harrisburg to review the budget document prior to the final passage deadline of December 31st. As such, I respectfully request that council exercise its true power and gives the citizens of Harrisburg a fair, accountable, inclusive, and respectful budget process that adheres to the statutes promulgated by law. Best regards, Otto Banks. And hang on one second. We have a correction here. Rachel Gold said that her comment that I said was a repeat is not a repeat. So for the record, I will read it. Rachel Gold is a Riverside neighborhood resident. Dear City Council, I ask that you please delay a vote on the 2021 budget measure until the end of the month and provide additional opportunities for feedback. The public has, hasn't had nearly enough time to participate and weigh in on what is being proposed. The five-plus hour meeting yesterday was a marathon of information, and although I was able to afford the, to afford the time to be there, surely a lot of people were not. And I suspect we all need more time to absorb and ask questions. If we are focused on improving public safety, I would like to see the city first focus on responding to the health and housing crisis currently happening in our community and appropriate money outside of the police department to address them. Thanks to the counselors who asked tough questions about the police budget last night, especially, especially council members Green, Majors, and Daniels. Lastly, I am concerned about how difficult the city's decision-making process is to participate in and would like to see accessibility of the process and information improved. One thing that would help would be if the meeting agenda's minutes and the link to the meeting recording could be stored in the same place. The videos especially are difficult to find right now. And that is from Rachel Gold. This comment is from Ralph Vartan. He says, dear Mr. Allen, thank you for the opportunity to submit this comment letter. In 2019, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority for Harrisburg, the authority, approved the city of Harrisburg's five-year financial plan. That plan provided for a headcount of 462 full-time employees and provided that the number of city employees would remain at the current budgeted workforce levels. The city's proposed budget for 2021 proposes a headcount of 512 FTEs, an increase of 50. The abruptness of the increase is a red flag and indicative of a lack of management discipline. I would like to draw your attention to the section of the proposed budget entitled Performance Measurements. See page nine. It states, the 2021 proposed budget does not include data measuring, excuse me, yeah, data measuring a department's performance as the 2018, 2019, and 2020 actuals, and 2021 projected measurement data was not complete before the preparation of this document. The city should take care that its spending policies produce positive measurable outcomes. It is within the city's purview to adopt policies that provide for the health, safety, and welfare of its residents and stakeholders. The authority's mission is to assure the city provides for proper financial planning procedures and budgeting practices. Accordingly, my criticism is limited to the breakdown, downs in planning and performance measurements. In my opinion, the abrupt nature of the increased spending in the 2021 budget proposed, proposal does not indicate proper planning procedures. For example, a major new initiative to create a new community services division with over $1 million in new expenditure did not proceed from a transparent process with public engagement and does not provide for identifiable and measurable outcomes. And I apologize, this is from the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, who's addressing this letter. I will raise as additional concern that the new proposed budget provides for $67,502,987 in general funds, operating expenses in 2021, an increase of over $4 million from the plan approved last year. The spending plan relies on fund balance to pay for general operating expenses. Please note, I have made several requests for explanation from city management and have not received any in response to date. Finally, please note, these comments represent my thoughts and opinions as an individual authority member and not necessarily those of the authority as a whole. Yours sincerely, Mr. Ralph Vartan, and of the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority for Harrisburg. And it looks like that is the last comment for tonight.
Thank you, Chardean.
Okay. Any other questions, council members?
Not, not a question, but Chardean, many of us, I guess this is the, the luxury of having your other devices available or being at the computer, received an email regarding the reading of public comments, and it was a comment that was submitted by Pamela Parsons that wasn't read fully. And it, in reading through it while we were here, it, it does And it in reading through it while we were here, uh, it it does not mirror any other comments that have been read. So we could ensure that either that that those that this comment was read into the record or um, I I can read it i- if you uh.
That's fine.
Do you have it, uh, Shadane?
Yes, I do.
Okay, would you please read into record?
Thank you.
Okay, um, this comment is from Pamela Parsons. Uh, Mayor Pep and Foods and Harrisburg City Council Members. During my nearly forty years of living in Harrisburg, I have attended many, many city council meetings, committee meetings, budget hearings. And community meetings. I've been following city council, the planning commission and public safety hearings online online since early in the pandemic. I would like to share my observations with you. Meetings are not easily accessible. It is difficult to find the living, the live meeting streams unless you look in just the right place at just the right time. Some nights I have had to check multiple places to find the link. The city needs to be responsible to put those links front and center on the website while they are happening. This limits citizen participation. There is no consistency with the live stream and comments. Some have comments running during the stream. Others allow call ins and some only allow written comments submitted by four P M. There is no rhyme or reason to this, except that it limits citizen participation. Three, links to written materials are difficult to find. Using the search function to filter out irrelevant documents to find the agenda or minutes you want is frustrating. Last night, the mayor mentioned that an additional packet of bu- of budget information, including questions and answers and job descriptions. Was posted on the city website. I had no luck in finding it and obtained the documents from a council member. The general orders posted on the police website is exactly the same poorly copied and loosely redacted document. That I obtained via R T K or right to know request four years ago. Again, this limits citizens' knowledge and participation. Often, if comments are submitted that appear to be using the same template, they are not read in their entirety. Some of us are good with words. Some of us have the time to write out a comment in the way you want it and in the timeframe you needed. Some of us have access to laptops. Some of us write English well, but not everyone. That is why there are templates. That's how some of us are able to participate. If you don't read the comments, all the comments, you're you limit access and participation. The person reading the comments often uses the dead names by reading what comes through on Google or the email address rather than the chosen name on the comment. Our names are our names. When you misname or misgender us, you limit access and participation. Uh, the person, um, community conversations on Facebook. At noon on Fridays are not a replacement for actual interaction with Harrisburg residents. It's very limited access and participation. When you take a community proposal like the South Allison Hill Safety Plan. That was created without the the voices of the actual community, without black and brown voices at the table, you are limiting participation. There is no translation of any type ever for city residents who do not speak English or who cannot hear. You've limited access to participation there too. I can only conclude from these observations that the mayor and city council do not want all Harrisburg residents to have access and participation. Apparently such privilege is only for white, moneyed, able bodied, cisgender. Cisgender, you, or yes, cisgender, us citizens, U S. I'm not really us citizens. Perhaps some of the money that was allocated for a police department that is unable to show the data citizens require. Could be used to create better citizen access to the process. And that is from Pamela Parsons of South Allison Hill. And Ms. Parsons, I personally apologize for dismissing your comment.
Okay, Shadane, did you read everything? Did she put in that comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, council members, before we adjourn tonight?
Just a kind of a quick update. I wanted to make sure um to reiterate that I know that there.
I can hear you, Ben.
Am I, can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, just want to reiterate, I know we have at least one kind of amendment in information that we're working on. Um, we do have some outstanding um information we are going to try to track down. Um, but if anyone has additional amendments, things like that, please uh get that over as quickly as possible, just so we can make sure it's formed correctly and um. And review the impact of the budget um just to make sure we're in line with the budgetary guidelines that we have in place. And in terms of. Um, if there's any outstanding questions, feel free to get them over directly to the administration if you could C C me, just so I have a sense of what is um out there and still pending. And then I know uh we have to resolve the um the question surrounding the um coresponders with the county and that interaction as well. Um, lastly, um, you know, mayor, I'd like to get some insight back to if we are uh pulling out. Um, unused personnel funds on a quarterly basis. I'd like to be specific at what we are going to allocate them for. Um, I reiterate that kind of request. Um, we've had several um uh requests from council members, whether it be uh blade uh remediation, um demolition. Um, small business loan, there are a number of options that are out there. I'd like to know what's feasible. Um, I know that um, you know, in reading the public comment, there is a lot of uh focus on some programs. Um, I wanted to thank Councilmember Bowers for offering uh giving the opportunity from building and housing perspective to explain. Uh, the relationship between federal funds um that we use for some of these programs. Um, I want to reiterate that a lot of the social services that I think many residents are requesting are typically allocated out of the county budget. Um, so I just want to just be mindful of kind of where things are, the various pots that exist, both in municipal, county, state and even federal government. Um, rousing where some of our limitations might be from appropriating funds. Um, there is certainly um a a well intentioned um. Concern from the community about how we make sure that we are not just singularly focused on obviously um the public safety budget specifically. I know that has dominated our budgetary conversation. Um, but I would like to really highlight the fact that there are several other great initiatives, projects, working on infrastructure, things that are going on. So um as much as we have gone through the budgetary hearings and we've discussed some of these things, I just want to make sure that. Um, in addition to the emergency declaration cities doing and the memorandum that we'll be focusing in on. Um, the program for small business assistance, um, the calls for rental assistance, these are um important, important, important initiatives and programs. That are out there that are happening right now and things that are going on within the city. So again, I know there has been a almost singular focus from both public comment. And and about four hours from our own time, talking specifically about public safety. There are so many other aspects to how we are appropriating funds and programs going forward that are very, very important. Um, but again, we have to remiss to highlight the fact that where we can appropriate and where we can't. Um, for instance, we're not funding programs for the school district. They get to do that um themselves. Um, so that's something that I, again, I just kind of want to reiterate and and as we've complete this budgetary process. I understand that there is can always be a request for additional time for consideration of public comment. Um, I want to personally say that there's not a single sitting council member here, and I know I don't have to speak for everyone. That does not take to heart every single comment that we receive from the community. And we take that very, very seriously as we apply our, do share a responsibility. To do the first and major initiative that we do is to pass a budget um to keep the city's finances moving forward from one calendar year to the next. Um, so again, I just kind of wanted to kind of close with that um kind of closing comment. Um, we will still move exponentially as we can um to move towards passage of a budget. But we only get to do that with the collective body working to do that. So we move together as kind of one. Um, and coalesce around where we need to do from a proprietary standpoint. So having said that. Um, again, keep in mind amendments, please get them to me. Uh, we will introduce any amendment that has been uh introduced by a council member and put that up for individual vote um on the budget. Um, I also do want to thank everybody uh for the time devoted from the members of the administration to the department heads. Um, I know that it's a very stressful time of year. Um, I know there's so many things going on. Um, sometimes I wish that we didn't follow a calendar year budget, but that is not for me to ever decide. Um, because it happens at this time of year, every year. Um, but again, I do want to express my appreciation for everybody, for their diligence, for their patience. Um, for their willingness to be a part of this, for asking tough questions, for engaging in the process. Um, and again, participating in what is the single most important um role that we play, um, at least in my perspective on on city council. Um, so with that, I will turn it back over to council president. Thank you for allowing me to chair these budget hearings for my now seventh budget in the city.
You're so welcome. Any other additional comments, council members?
Just questions going back to the clarification on the ten percent is an entire budget or is it ten percent per department or ten percent per line item?
Who's doing ten percent? What are you talking about? What do you make reference to?
The amendments.
Amendments and amendments and advertising requirements. I think that's what she's referring to.
Okay, okay.
There, the requirement under uh state law is that if there is an increase at ten percent or more, uh, that. Requires that that increase be published and available for inspection, but that's ten percent in the aggregate of the budget. So if you raise the overall budget ten percent, if you increase any line item by twenty five percent. Um, that also requires a a a public advertising, which is ten days ahead of when you can vote, so people can inspect and see what that change is. So so going up is harder than going down. Which in practical terms means it's it's easier to cut something than to add something that isn't there at all. So if you put something new in the budget that isn't there, then under state law, that's a hundred percent increase because the line item didn't exist. And so you have to have, the public has to have a chance to see that in written form, how that affects the overall budget. And you cannot uh vote on it then for ten days. You have to make it available for inspection for ten days.
Okay, and then the um, so you had mentioned that there weren't any typos in the actual ordinance. Uh, were there typos in the in what's the binder, which is exhibit to the ordinance?
I I can't speak to that. I I could not go through it all. Um, the uh, there was uh, one thing I thought was an error. When I went back, it wasn't an error. There was something else I uh that was discussed as uh something that was left in that was meant to be taken out. Um, but that was from a different department. Um, but that doesn't, it didn't change the budget in any way. So uh, you know, Mr. Woolley and Erica, who have worked very hard on this and Brooke can probably speak better. Uh, if there is any corrections on those levels. From from the law bureau's perspective, it is the budget ordinance itself that has the major line item categories in it. That is what um is considered the law at the end of the day, and the rest of it is supporting materials.
And then um for President Williams and Vice President Alec, uh, so can you go over the schedule for the rest of the year, I guess?
Ms. Daniels, uh, we are going to have tomorrow is going to be our next uh budget for to clean up anything that's not been. Uh, spoken up in the different departments, uh, Mr. Alec. Uh, also, the um. I have uh lit- legislation from the last uh work session that will be voted on tomorrow. Uh, then I will have a special meeting on Monday to address the budget. And that's the that's the final meeting for this year.
And I I have an appointment Monday.
You want to call in?
I can't. I have a me, I have an appointment.
Okay, okay.
Can we, is there a reason why we can't do it Tuesday? I mean, we all have our Tuesdays set aside.
I have an appointment on Tuesday.
Okay, um, this is uh Councilman Majors, I just, so. Well, first I want to also, you know, we, Chair Alec, thank you for guiding us through this, these two days of uh budget hearings. Thank you to the administration for your participation uh as well in this process. To my fellow council members, we thank you as I wanted to make sure, thank you all as well for doing, you know, going through this uh process. I also want to thank um the public for for their active participation throughout uh this budget process. Uh, you know, these things are uh are are difficult and we do appreciate them and their willingness to pay attention. To what's actually happening in the city of Harrisburg as we all are, you know, in the midst of this global pandemic. Uh, one thing I think um is clear from me, from our our conversations, particularly yesterday surrounding uh the police budget. That uh there are, there are some questions that I think need answers. Um, I also don't feel like uh we need to um. To rush to uh a uh a conclusion on on the budget. I know uh Chair Green has a a couple of amendments that she may want to consider. And uh in speaking to individual council members uh over the past couple of days. Um, I think there are some other opportunities for us to uh offer amendments. Um, and just given um, you know, some of the complexities that that there are and to ensure that. You know, if we are going to make an amendment or offer an amendment, that it it adheres to uh. The uh, the statute as uh Neil had uh has stated, or if we're going to uh propose any uh changes. Uh, that we have adequate time to uh go over them. Uh, so in terms of, so for Chair Alec, you know, if I were to offer an an amendment that um, for instance, you know, moved a significant amount of money or. Uh, had a, uh, you know, move a significant amount of money, that would then require or trigger the um potentially the the ten day.
Who are you hearing this to? Who, you are requesting to continue on with the budget, Mr. Majors. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
So I'm not, I'm asking.
You're, you're, you're trying to satisfy a small percentage of the residents of the city of Harrisburg. When they had an opportune time for two weeks to look at this budget, just like you did. You had an opportunity. Yes, you are, Mr. Majors, and I'm sorry.
Let me finish my comment.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, but I'm not grading you, but I think, you know, you're playing to the tune of of twenty nine forty nine people. Who we have fifty thousand residents in the city of Harrisburg. We have a job to do. Go ahead.
So President Williams, that wasn't even what I was, what I was was speaking to. There are, there are other potential areas of the budget where we may potentially need some changes. One of the questions that I have that I would like to have answered and I will provide in writing as well would be. What are we looking at as a potential actual spend for the bud, the police budget for the remainder of the year? Um, you know, and as uh Chair Alec had mentioned, as we talked about yesterday. Uh, in terms of the personnel line items and how they continually are above what we actually spend. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of that, because if we are able to move any funds around, we should do so at this time. I have, I I, we want to hear from all residents, and this isn't trying to placate, this is actually for me in terms of budgeting. Because we do have a lot of uh carryover in the budget. And as one of our members of the I C A mentioned, uh, that there a lot of changes were made in this budget that are spending uh fund balance. And those are some things that I still need to potentially get some clarification on. So again, I I I I I I take a little offense that you're, you think that you know where I'm going, but I do have some some legitimate questions that we we do need answers to. Um, so uh just looking for uh the potential direction if we're going to offer uh. An amendment, um, and we do have until Monday, if I get it in tomorrow or Friday, then I can have it reviewed if it were to. Uh, if it were to trigger uh one of, one of the uh, the the advertiser requirements. It may not. I just want to make sure I have enough time to have it reviewed.
Yeah, I think to what Neil had said, um, to just keep in mind from a, there can be amendments that most likely are budgetary neutral, right? That that the amendment may not trigger an up or down in terms of the spend. Um, the larger concern to Neil's perspective is if it is a a increase to the budget specifically. Um, that'd be increasing spend, it would trigger an advertising requirement. Um, I believe also if there is a change by more than ten percent of the aggregate total of the budget, that would also trigger. Um, a a advertising um a timeframe as well. And due to the length of time between now and the end of the year, those things would be fairly difficult to to enact. Um, if we are merely looking at reducing specific uh spend, we just should be mindful of that impact of a total percent to the to the budget. Um, Neil, you might just want to confirm that I got that right in terms of my explanation thus far.
That that's pretty close. So the 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 big risk is, and and I, this is, these are council choices, however you wish to do it. Uh, is that if you have a new category that isn't there, that means no one got to review it before. That may have come and been perfectly happy with the budget, the part of the budget you're changing. That's where the ten days comes in, because that's a bigger than a twenty five percent single line item move. So if council gets together and say they want to do this new thing that isn't budgeted, that has to be put in writing so the public can see it and how it fits into the budget. Because it's bigger than twenty five percent. Monday is the fourteenth, so you have time still in the calendar year. But if you hit, you know, midnight on December thirty first without a. But if you hit, you know, midnight on December 31st without a budget, the law says it's the 2020 budget stays the 2021 budget. So you are on a statutory clock. And we've been down this road before, you know, you can, you know, you, you guys have a hard job to do in balancing what you have to balance. But there is some time on the clock still for this calendar year.
And I would just say, Wes, to your point, like, I totally get what you are saying in terms of timeline. I would still encourage anyone who has amendment, you know, the sooner or later, just for the opportunity to be able to review it amongst everyone in council as well. We have our legislative session tomorrow night. You know, I will, per, you know, council president's discretion too, if we need to suspend the rules to have any further discussion of amendments or things like that, I'm perfectly okay with that. I do want to make sure that we are acting, and listen, and this is coming from me, you know, personally. You know, this is our biggest responsibility to be able to do. And I don't, this has not been Alec's budget that, you know, has to get passed. This is city council's budget approval process. So, you know, the most dangerous thing that we can do as a city council is just to simply vote down a budget, right? So what we need to be able to have some degree of consensus around what we want to talk about. So to your, to your point in terms of timeline, I do think the sooner the later. Not that we can't entertain something in the ninth hour we've had. I think my first budget season that I ever did, I think I had 32 amendments like that were on the, on the, in choose the night of, passing the budget that we had to go through and stop time to be able to do. So I'm just saying I'd like to avoid that if at all possible. So we have time to be able to review, discuss, and be able to kind of resonate what those amendments are. So I think that's just kind of my, you know, two cents to add that, you know, obviously sooner or later, we will work in tandem to make sure we can get this done.
And I think that's kind of the.
Wait a minute, excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Daniels. Mr. Mattson, and then you, Ms. Daniels, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Right, yeah, no, for me, there was a couple of things that were probably telling that were revealed this evening. First, I think we got to figure out our relationship with the county in terms of the, yeah, and get that figured out, or those written agreements. Then the other piece is, is that we did have a senior ICA member mention that the budget isn't in compliance with the five-year plan. I think that's something we need to sort of discuss or look over. And also, we just found out our finance director is not a competitive salary, but we have seen massive salary increases in some of these other positions. So that's something else that I think we kind of need to unpack and digest. So, you know, and then I've always had concerns about the amount we were drawing from the general fund to fund a lot of these new positions. So I just think that this is a, you know, one of the, I've been doing these budgets for about three years now. This is one of the, I think, most substantial ones in terms of change. So I think it does call for a bit of taking our time and reviewing it. So that's just my two cents.
And Mr. Mattson and Mr. Majors, I agree with you. This is something, this is a very serious budget. This is about the only budget I've seen in the last 20 years or 16 years that I, that it's balanced. And I understand your points, but I'm saying to council members, if you have additional questions, why did you not ask them? That's why we're here to the time that we were last night. If you have additional concerns, I want you to ask them so that the public can hear what you have to ask. If you have a concern about the amount of money that's been going into the salaries of some of these individuals who work for the city of Harrisburg, why did you not put that in writing? Or why, excuse me, Mr. Mattson, why did you not express that tonight? Mr. Majors, you were talking.
You're still waiting for answers from the administration.
Excuse me, Ms. Daniels, excuse me, Ms. Daniels, I'm talking to Mr. Mattson, and I will let you speak in a minute.
It's not our fault, the pace of.
Ms. Daniels.
Answered or did not answer.
We will have you, we will have you muted if you don't be quiet.
Okay, go ahead and mute me.
Go ahead, Ms. Mattson, go ahead.
So.
Because you're finally getting into the budget, and you've not been in the budget. Every year for five years, you voted it down. So finally, you're asking questions.
I've always asked questions, that's why I voted.
You voted down, and you voted down.
They did not meet value, they did not meet the needs of the community.
Go ahead, Mr. Mattson, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mattson.
For me, maybe I missed something, maybe I misread, you know, a lot of information's been flowing the last few weeks, but, for example, the comments from Mr. Vartan, I just saw that this evening. And to me, that's a substantial criticism. And that's something that we just got done negotiating with the legislators to keep our inflated taxes. And there are, you know, I know we have lobbyists, but they're also our de facto liaisons to the legislators. So that's something we have to take very seriously when a senior member is criticizing that we are not in compliance with the five-year plan. You know, the, the things with the clarity over the relationship with the county, I just found about that today's executive session. You know, the fact we don't have a competitive salary for our finance director was pretty much revealed through our HR department testimony today. So, I mean, I, again, if this information was relayed to us, I'm sorry I missed it. I've always wanted to wait until I had concerns about the massive draw on the general fund for these positions for some time, but I wanted to wait out to hear the discussion, to make a final determination. But, you know, to me, these are big items and we shouldn't take them lightly. So if I missed something, I apologize in advance, but I, I think we should really take our time with this.
I understand that, Mr. Mattson. I just heard about the county myself. At five minutes to five tonight, George Hartwick, Commissioner Hartwick called me regarding the correspondence that he received from the city. So I didn't.
You know.
And Mr. Vartan never, never emailed me any of the correspondence he read tonight.
Right, so, I mean, all I'm saying is, is that, again, it's, I think some of these are quick fixes and turnarounds, but I also feel like hopefully we can return them in 24 hours. That just seems like a very quick turnaround.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Majors.
Thank you, President Williams. I would agree with Councilman Mattson on that. And again, I am not asking for a, a, a long delay. What I am potentially asking for, since we know we are going to meet tomorrow, and then we are, because we have to deal with the emergency piece, and we're going to have a meeting on Monday as well or Tuesday, but sometime next week to move that emergency piece in its second phase. If we're able to work on some amendments, even if it's just that, until we get to that second meeting that we are going to have to have anyway, I'm just asking for that, that period of time to be able to, you know, finalize some amendments, get, you know, get either the law, the law bureau or someone else to ensure that they meet the, they're either budget neutral or meet any of the reporting requirements before moving forward. Again, you know, we, we all have questions. I, you know, I, I don't always like providing all of my questions in advance because there are questions that, as you're reading through, you may have, you're reading through the budget, you may have, or things that you may have thought have come up, as well as trying to ensure that, you know, we do allow the administration to have some time to review all of our comments. But there are other times where we do have additional questions that we want to add. So again, this isn't an indefinite delay. It is, you know, we already have a second meeting that we're going to have to have. So I'm seeking, you know, using that as a potential time to, to have a vote on a budget. That was it.
Wes, I think I, just to indicate, I think that's what Wanda had indicated, which is started that we would handle resolving some of the questions we have with the budget by tomorrow night and allow us to vote on the budget at a special session on Monday with the special exception. I think that's what.
Okay, that, that wasn't clear in what I was, what was relayed. So also Councilwoman Bowers.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Bowers. I'm sorry, Ms. Bowers.
Oh, you're still muted.
I muted.
Oh, great, thanks. So, no, I, I thank you. I just wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues. I am in full agreement. I mean, I feel like I, it really shouldn't matter if it's 10 people or, or one. I think we need to respect the process and given the information that we've shared tonight, I don't think it's realistic for us to believe that we will receive a response, perhaps from the county in 24 hours or less. Because Mayor, you spoke to Charter and President Williams, you spoke to Commissioner Hartwick. So there seems to be some miscommunication and perhaps that needs to be figured out before we can move forward. And I believe before we can even offer the amendment that Councilwoman Green would like to offer, until we get clarity on that point. So I am in agreement, and thank you for clarifying that we would move forward. And so with that, since we wouldn't be taking the final vote until all, everything has been clarified, does that mean that we will have an opportunity for additional public comment at that time on the budget?
Most certainly. I, I never stopped the public from having any public comment. They may want to address some other issues that we bring up even after we're ready to vote. I will certainly let them do that before we vote.
Okay, and I know that we've only been entertaining written comments. Is there another form of public comment that can be received that may be a little less cumbersome for residents?
Well, we can talk a moment. He did indicate that there's another way that we can use, another format we can use. So I'll speak to him tomorrow about that. But my concern is that, Ms. Bowers, and I thank you for your comments. And Mr. Majors, I was not trying to be offensive. If you felt that was offensive, I apologize, I'm not. I'm just concerned that I don't want to drag department heads back in here and ask some additional questions, have them research and do additional work. I want you to get your questions together, put them in format so that we can present all the questions or concerns that you have about the budget. Certainly, this is not something that you rush through. I've been through this process 16 times, and I don't want to ever rush the process with a budget. Now, I'm just hearing Mr. Vartan's concerns tonight, and I, I know the controversy surrounding the commissioner and also with Mayor Patton Foose. So I will clarify that up tomorrow. I don't know how I'm going to clarify that up with Mr. Vartan. I will try to meet with him sometime tomorrow afternoon to find out what his concerns are with the budget.
And Wanda, I spoke to him today too, so this, late this afternoon as well, so we can, we can circle back on that too if you want.
Okay, okay. Ms. Daniels, now, did she leave?
I'm still here.
Okay, okay, go ahead, please.
So this was going back to the initial point Councilman Alec was making about the notice period. So one of the things that, I wanted to see how process-wise you wanted to move forward, because one of the things that happened that first year was that all of the proposed amendments, you know, if they all passed, would have gotten us over the notice requirement. So we then worked through that process to make sure that that didn't happen. So are, do you want to do anything like that? Or do you just want to take chances come, come the day of the vote, that hopefully the 10% threshold doesn't, doesn't happen?
We certainly wanted to, we, Mr. Alec, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I would rather not, like, I don't, I don't want to take chances per se. I'd rather, as much advanced notice as we can with potential amendments that people have, just so we can review and see what that impact could be. And like I said, like, I, that's why I keep wanting to press and say, hey, if we can get it, like, if we can discuss it tomorrow night during legislative session, the more time, the better, just so we can assure that we are kind of within the statutory requirements that we're functioning under. So, and again, and I, and as you all know from years past, I have no problem putting up every amendment that is sent. I just want to make sure we know what they are to be able to do so. So, and I do think it's important in that respect to be able to vote on the amendments individually as well and to review. So again, it might be good to do some analysis on if all these amendments were passed, you know, that impact and things like that. So the, the more we know early on, the better for us to be able to have it so we can at least provide that context. Because I do want to know, like, I'd, I'd almost want to say, as we're doing it, should we pass this? This is the impact, right? It's, this is a budget neutral amendment. This is amendment that would decrease the size of budget. This is amendment that would increase the size. I think having that information to be able to share is much better for us to be able to communicate that, not just with each other, but obviously so the public understands how and why we might be voting.
I'm obligated, Chairman, to mention two technical issues. One, I apologize, it just didn't come to mind till just now. Tomorrow, technically, you could vote on amendments if anybody wanted to make them, not just discuss them, because it's really just the second reading of the budget in a legislative session. So that you're not prohibited from doing that tomorrow. But the other more technical issue, and frankly, I got to look at this, the advertisement under traditional advertisement is that you advertise the budget vote already for tomorrow night. But we're under this new COVID advertisement rule. And I just don't, I have to put the two of them together tomorrow because the COVID one gives you more flexibility to move things around than the traditional rule. So the traditional rule is when you introduce the budget, you advertise the day of the vote so everyone knows exactly when it's going to happen. And that, obviously, Monday or Tuesday has not been advertised.
We can just stay the meeting tomorrow night, can't we?
Okay, pardon me?
You could recess the meeting tomorrow night.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, if need be. That, that would satisfy both requirements of the emergency order as well as the budget, correct?
Right, because whoever was going to attend tomorrow night would then know when the meeting is moved to the vote.
Right.
We, but now, you know, once we advertise it, but you're going to look at the COVID. But once we advertise it, we certainly do have to pass the budget on that particular day. But you said because of the COVID restrictions that we will be.
I have to look at the two languages and what part it stayed. It did stay part of the law.
So we then, we don't want to recess, is that, we don't want to recess?
No, no, it, the recess is the only way to do it without having to totally re-advertise the original.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we did that in the past when we passed.
Right, we did.
On the 29th, but it was advertised earlier. We had to recess the meeting until a date certain.
Sure.
Madam President, can I say one thing about the Vartan letter? Just to, for the record, the Vartan letter is very clear in that he says he's speaking for himself and not for the ICA. That's the last line of the letter. And he sent that letter himself. It wasn't sent by the ICA. Number two, he is not saying that the budget is not in compliant with the five-year plan that we just sent to the ICA. In fact, it is obviously a part of the five-year plan that they have yet to vote on. What he's saying is that the budget is, it does not reflect the previous five-year plan that was submitted over a year ago to the ICA. And of course, it's not going to reflect that. That was prior to COVID, prior to Black Lives Matter, prior to all the things that we've, you know, have gone on in the last year. So obviously, there was a need for an updated five-year plan. Just wanted to make those, those points as you sort of seek clarity and reread that letter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I just read, I got about five texts from, from residents, and I was just reading them. So I'll forward those to you. Any other concerns or questions or comments?
I guess just for my clarification, am I advertising the meeting on Monday as a special legislative session? Or?
As both, as a special legislative session on the emergency ordinance.
In the budget.
And, and a reconvening on the budget.
Okay.
We'll, we'll work with language with you tomorrow, if that's okay.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Anyone else? Council members, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.